Good morning, and welcome to the July 24th meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk.
Item one on the closed session agenda, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, County of Calaveras, the Pacific Gas and Electric Company at All Sacramento County Case Number JCCP4853.
Any public comments? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Item two, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Anticipated Litigation, Initiation of Litigation, One Case Related to Kane County, Utah, the USA, Case Number 117CV01991EDK, Pending in the United States Court of Federal Claims.
Any public comments on this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Item three, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, Rafael Calderon v. Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 17CV42428.
Any public comments on this item? Seeing none. We retire to closed session. Good morning.
Good morning.
Can we all please stand for the pledge allegiance if you can. Madam Clerk, can you please lead us?
Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please read out from closed session?
Report of closed session. Item one, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, County of Calaveras v. Pacific Gas and Electric Company at All Sacramento County Case Number JCCP4853. There was no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Anticipated Litigation, Initiation of Litigation, One Case Related to Kane County, Utah v. the USA, Case Number 117CV01991EDK, Pending in the United States Court of Federal Claims. On a motion by Supervisor Olivera and a second by Supervisor Clapp, the Board voted unanimously to approve the initiation of litigation by opting in to the class action lawsuit. Item three, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, Rafael Calderon v. Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 17CV42428. Supervisor Clapp recused himself from this discussion, and there was no reportable action taken.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to the next item, announcements.
Mr. Chair, I have an announcement.
Can we have Madam Clerk please read?
I'm sorry.
Into record.
Announcements. This is a time for Board members and county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Now, Mr. Supervisor Olivera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to inform you that the passing of Dan Leary by the Arnold area. Dan was one of the officers of the Moose Lodge, but more importantly, he was a member of the East, I'm sorry, the Ebbets Pass Fire District, a board member being one of their directors there. There will be some celebration of life activities, I understand, on August 5th, and I have arranged with the Board request to have an official proclamation to be read on August 14th at our next Board meeting. Having said that, Dan was a pillar of that community, and he was a friend of mine. I thought certain prayers were about to test his wife, and we're going to miss that young man and that gentleman. I miss him very much. I'd like to acknowledge Chief Johnson and members of the Moose Lodge here for this session. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Mills, your lights on.
Yes, just a reminder that this Thursday, Central Sierra Economic Development Summit at Ironstone and Murphy's, beginning at 8:30 for those that are interested.
Any other announcements? Supervisor Garamendi.
Condolences to the family, Mike, and to you, sorry about your loss, and to the family. Calaveras Unified School District's back in session today. Everybody be aware, kids are going to be running around and new drivers with driver's licenses and whatnot, so welcoming back. We've got a new principal at the high school, and school's on again. And I know, it still seems like the middle of summer, but here we go. Heads up.
Any staff announcements? Sheriff DeVassilio.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board members. I have a couple of things I'd like to bring to light. There's been some rhetoric in the community. I'll start off with my bear cat, our bear cat, the bear cat. I keep hearing people saying that it's going to cost the county $400,000. It is not going to cost the county $400,000. This is a piece of equipment that the sheriff's department is going to be putting some funds from AB443 together. The Friends of the Sheriff's Office is going to be donating some money, and originally we came to you folks for $200,000 because we thought it was going to be around 400 grand. We didn't want to have to come back. There's about $137,000, maybe $140,000 that may need to be spent by the county. But I want the public and you Board members to know that there are some other avenues of funding that I am looking at so that there is not a cost out of the general fund for that piece of equipment. And it is just that. And I want people to understand, it is a piece of equipment that law enforcement needs to have. It's just like our guns or our batons or our pepper spray. It is a piece of equipment that we have in our toolbox. As my dad told me years ago, better to have and not need than to need and not have. This is a piece of equipment that can go into a residential area and pull civilians out because we have somewhere to put them to keep them safe. We can go down to the county government building and protect people. And what's even better is we can go to a school and put numerous children, your children, your grandchildren, citizens, your children and your grandchildren, inside of this vehicle to keep them safe. It is a tool. It is not just something that we want because we want it. To Walimy County has one, Amador County has one, Stanislaus and San Joaquin County have these units. They are a tool. And again, I am working on some funding that will not cost the county anything, so...
Sheriff, can you explain to the public, people out watching, AB443 funds, what those actually are when you bring that up?
Absolutely. AB443 is a bill that was passed many years ago that the state of California gives rural county sheriffs with under 100,000 population $500,000 a year to use as non-discretionary. In the past, we have purchased vehicles, you know, patrol vehicles, county council.
County council.
I just wanted to remind the Board Chair and Sheriff DeVassilio that this is for announcements of events, and that any further substantive discussion about an item that is not on the agenda really should be worked with staff to agendize an informational item for further substantive discussion. I just wanted to try to bring...
Reel me back in?
Right.
Okay. Well, then I will stop because the other item I have is along those lines also.
Okay.
So, thank you for your time.
Any other staff announcements? If not, we'll move on to the next item, public comment.
Public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Welcome.
I'm Phil Albers from Mountain Ranch. I'll be back later with a legal request for a zoning change and a waiver of the fee. But two months ago, I filled out a form for that purpose. I was informed later that the form was not approved by the county council, and it was of no value. That same day, I went to the county council's office, and the girl at the front desk was unaware of the form. So somewhere between now and then and coming soon, I need a form to fill out so that I can come talk to you guys about this zoning change and waiver of the fee because I have filled out a form that is of no value. I have here also the original zoning that was done years ago on this parcel of land and zoned at R1. I own seven parcels of land on Washington Street in downtown Mountain Ranch, and out of those seven parcels, I have four different zonings. I've lived in Mountain Ranch over 50 years, and I've never zoned anything. This was done by your predecessors. And I have here a dozen comments why this should not have been zoned R1, but it was zoned by the supervisors regardless of this form. Also, I have the general plan that says this should be a commercial, the county community plan that we worked on 10, 15 years ago with dozens of meetings. We've got a nice program going, but of course, it's not part of the general plan, which has not been finalized, I guess. So all of these things fall together, and that's my zoning change. So when the plan or the paperwork is completed that I can fill out a proper form, I'll be back. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could add, I will ask staff to grab this gentleman's contact information, follow-up, and make sure that we sort out what the confusion is.
And Board Chair, I just wanted to clarify, this item was before the Board last week, and the Board did adopt a process, so certainly staff will work with this gentleman.
Good morning. Katinka McEwen, Calaveras resident. The ban is doomed to fail. It's already failing. The negative impacts on the local economy and environment are clear. Nearly all local businesses, at least those that are still in business, report sales are down 30 to 40 percent. Calaveras is not for business. As the economic development director this Board hired for more than $100,000 will desperately try to convince anyone willing to listen. The failure's not hers. No amount of money could convince any sane person this county cares about, employers or employees. This Board has effectively destroyed over 200 family businesses and caused the loss of hundreds of permanent jobs. The financial driver of the local economy has been deliberately squashed. The best and most compliant, law-abiding, tax-paying farmers have been told they're not the type of people this county wants here. Meanwhile, the cartels and gangs continue to operate without punishment or penalty as they always have. This Board claims to value so highly those abiding by the law, yet it bans those who are following the law and never arrests nor prosecutes those that don't. Seeing as you prefer to allow the worst offenders to operate with impunity, a better slogan would be "Calaveras Sanctuary County" or maybe "Calaveras for Cartels." These facts, coupled with the proven history that prohibition does not work, demonstrate the ban has only succeeded at one thing, and that is supporting the black market. Why is it, Dennis, you're so intent on growing the size of our local government, especially when you know full well there's no money to pay these additional county employees? You intend to pay for these positions by increasing building department fees, which will only further stymie reconstruction, then at the same time tasking the self-funding enterprise of code enforcement to find the public into submission so they can get their weekly pay. Your solution to this county's structural deficit is to raise taxes, fees, fines, and increase new hires at the same time. This makes no fiscal sense. If you're not careful, everyone's going to find out that you are really a tax-and-spend liberal. Your burning desire to implement these changes to 806 or letting your Agenda 21 beliefs shine through. First of all, how are you going to pay for these meetings? Are you going to issue everyone an expensive permit to attend and then find them when they do? What good are town hall meetings when the questions are being prescreened by Ed Short and Ethan Turner? These are the very people whose salary depend on the success of 806. Would it be that this is the best way to eliminate the most difficult questions, or is it just the best way to, as you said, educate the public with deceptive misinformation from Jack Cox at the last minute? Right or wrong, Dennis? Really? This is how you defend your findings? We're also tired of your intentionally misleading policy gaffes and false concerns that change depending on who you're talking to at the time. In one breath, you're so immeasurably concerned about environmental degradation that you dismiss the benefits of 200-plus county-approved and regulated law-abiding farms. In the next, you want to dam the economy just like the Stanislaw. You don't want the county dependent on state and federal funding. Instead, you'd rather the poor local populace eat its own tail to enforce suburban HOAs and CCRs to maintain the county's rural quality of life. You've certainly made one thing abundantly clear: you are a politician. And you're wrong. Thank you.
I have the dubious distinction of owning the Gwynne Mine, which I bought, our family bought, from Jack's grandfather, which should be disclosed. Howsoever, he has been of no help or counsel in any way to the advancement of my project. He has no conflict of interest on this, and we agree or disagree extremely on some issues. So do not think that we are in collusion. Making you miss the lively discussion two weeks ago regarding your Rule 46. I said some impolitic things about a gentleman who's become a public figure, and under those conditions, there is no libel potential. I can say what I want to say, but what I said was true. Your Rule 46 is in obvious contradiction to the freedom of speech provisions in the Constitution. The fact that if it was enforced against me while these people have been allowed to break every feeling, every rule, every letter of that law with impunity, particularly Mr. Clapp, who has cursed at the community, he called for the recall of Representative Garamendi, which is totally illegal and was never pursued in a timely manner. It has been disgraceful, the representation this county has endured. My important issue, however, is Gwynne Mine Road. It has come to my attention since I met with Jack on the property a week and a half ago that Gwynne Mine Road is no longer available for access of emergency vehicles, greatly endangering the public. You guys should have known about it. Emergency response did know about it. The concrete barricades were pulled close just enough that an emergency vehicle could not get down that road. It is the most fire-prone canyon left in this county after the Butte Fire put a fire break there for us. This is the most likely place for a big burn that would take the entire town of Paloma as well as the Garamendi compound.
Thank you, Joel.
Please warn the public.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good morning. Gary Stevens, District 1. I'm here to briefly discuss what happened two weeks ago at the July 10th Board of Supervisors meeting regarding the no-bid contract that was to be awarded to the sheriff's campaign manager. This was an inside, back-room deal that would have gone forward as planned if it were not for some of the people and the citizens that spoke up against it. The contractor had signed it over a month ago. Well, it was almost a month prior to this coming before the Board. I want to thank those citizens who came before the Board and spoke out against it. This was over a quarter-million-dollar contract for two years to the sheriff's campaign manager. And again, I want to thank those people for coming in and speaking out against that. They questioned why there was no bid process for contractors or other businesses in the county to bid on this. They questioned why it was a quarter-million dollars going to that contractor. The other reason is, again, this is the sheriff's campaign manager, so why was this, you know, under the radar until the public brought it out? This is yet another reason why I'm going to run for sheriff, is to bring back integrity and honesty back to the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. Last week, in response to the disaster at Helsinki, I came and defined a bunch of words, starting with collusion and obstruction, and ending with treason and impeachment. Eleven terms I defined last week. If you missed them, I'm very sorry. Get a dictionary. They're very important words. Today, I'm going to define the word censorship. Censorship is taken from, in ancient Rome, one of two magistrates that were appointed to take the census and later to supervise public morals. Today, censorship is the suppression and elimination of certain words, thoughts, ideas, in an effort to control and manipulate individuals, society, or government. Censorship is one of the first tools dictators and tyrants use when they're trying to control a mass of people. I've come before you before, and I've talked about the importance of free speech, free press, and free choice, those freedoms which we are allowed in America to date, which are denied in Third World countries and countries under tyrants and dictators. So when I heard of people wanting to censor speech in this forum, it was offensive to me. It reminded me of my inability to express myself in my younger years when I felt I might insult or injure somebody's feelings. Now that I'm old, I have no screening, I have no censorship of my own thoughts. I try to refrain from using four-letter words in this forum, but I haven't used them in quite a while. And for the people that are defensive of criticism of the president, it reminds me just of what the president is trying to do now to individuals that disagree with him or criticize him. I hope to not see censorship instilled in this forum, although over the years, you folks have limited public speaking, public comment, time limits, and the number of days that we're able to come and express ourselves. So I'll just say, free speech, free press, free choice. That's what America is about. Thank you.
Susan, do we have a problem? We're good? Okay.
Good morning. Today, I'd like to ask the Board of Supervisors to consider a proclamation declaring August as TDS Awareness Month. The Urban Dictionary defines TDS as follows: Trump Derangement Syndrome, or TDS, is a mental condition in which a person has been driven effectively insane due to their dislike of Donald Trump, to the point of which they will abandon all logic and reason. Symptoms of this condition can be very diverse, ranging from hysterical outbursts to a complete mental break. TDS can also often result in the sufferer exhibiting violent homicidal or even genocidal desires. Sufferers have been known to wish direct harm on themselves such as increased taxes, desires for an economic recession, and even nuclear war, provided that action might in some way hurt Donald Trump. Paranoia is also a common symptom of TDS. Sufferers have been known to believe that they are in some way being persecuted, and in some cases, believe that they are about to be a victim of genocide. The paranoia does, however, not seem to be bad enough to make TDS sufferers act on their beliefs to the extent of attempting to actually leave the United States. If properly treated, sufferers of TDS can make a full recovery. Many sufferers have been known to grow out of TDS, yet many can often be treated by having their condition directly treated through the application of logical reasoning. It is also known that the products containing soy can exasperate the condition. Please consider setting up safe spaces with coloring books, Legos, and stuffed animals where sufferers can go during Board of Supervisor meetings, at least until the November election as outbursts of TDS may become uncontrollable and violent during this period. One of the ways to combat TDS is for sufferers to be reminded of President Trump's many accomplishments, some of which are: the lowest unemployment rate among African-Americans in history; the lowest unemployment rate among Hispanic-Americans in history; the lowest rate of unemployment among women in almost 70 years; 31 percent growth of the stock market in Trump's first year was the best it has been under a president since FDR; the biggest tax legislation to be approved by Congress since 1986; Neil Gorsuch confirmation to the Supreme Court as well as 23 federal judges, 12 appellate judges; a record for a first-year president; and 10 district court judges confirmed. Recognizing Jerusalem as the capital of Israel and moving our embassy to Jerusalem; decimating ISIS; the overhauled and mismanaged Veterans Administration; and giving veterans more healthcare choices. I've only got a few seconds left, but I want to thank you for considering this.
Good morning, gentlemen. Chris Johncolts, District 2. I'd like to say that I don't suffer from TDS, but I do suffer from logic, and I'm quite perplexed that a preacher would say that, something like that, about so many people without knowing them. I came today to talk about respect. I've been working out a lot lately since I have some free time, and I managed to fit into my old suit, so I thought I'd put it on and come up here and talk about respect. I have respect for you guys. I have respect for this chamber. I come and speak honestly and openly, and I don't denigrate other people. At the last meeting I spoke at, I watched the subsequent tape, and I was being disrespected by the staff as I was speaking, which I think is completely inappropriate. The staff works for me, and I expect better than that from them. I want to talk a little bit about history. I come from Tulare, California, which in the '30s was a big railroad town, the center of Tulare County, the county seat, the center of retail. The railroads crossed in Tulare. Highway 99 went through the middle of Tulare. My dad was the mayor in 1955. It was time to bypass the highway, and they said, "Well, we want to move it over clear on the edge of town, the edge of the new part of town, closer to Visalia." My dad said, "You're going to orphan the town. You're going to destroy the downtown and ruin all of our businesses. We're going to preserve our downtown." Okay. "We don't want the malls in Tulare. Let them go to Visalia. We're going to preserve our downtown." Today, Tulare's destitute. It has no downtown. It's completely vacant, has buildings that were built in the 1800s that are vacant. Visalia has a mall. Visalia has a vibrant downtown. Visalia's the county seat. This is what you're setting up here by making these decisions to insulate ourselves and not allow progress to happen. It's inevitable, gentlemen. You can't stop it. I would encourage you to look at Tulare. If you want information on it, I can help you. It's exactly what's happening here, and you're perpetuating it. It's going to happen again. There's very little doubt. The next thing that's happened to me is, for a couple of years in here, people talked about fear of the growers. I'm in fear to walk around my property. I was never able to get the growers to come together. I had some ideas about maybe going for walks with people who were afraid to break this down, and I... down, and identify where the actual problems were, because the sheriff wasn't doing it. But we were reluctant to do that, we didn't want to offend the sheriff. I'm now in fear to be on my own property. I've abated completely, I'm in compliance, I'm afraid to be on my property for fear of being raided, even though I have complied. I am no longer, I don't feel safe in Calaveras County being on my own property. I dash up there and I get away. I don't know how we got to this point, I never broke the law, and I have respect for everybody here on both sides, and I really don't understand what's happening in the county, and I think we can do better, and I think a lot of it's about respect.
Good morning again, Sheriff De Basilio. To answer that young man's statement, or rebut it, we're not going after the people who have abated, they're in compliance with the law, period. As far as what Mr. Stevens said, I think it was very clear by Mr. Lutz at the last meeting that he, in fact, is the one that approached Ms. Candace Keasy about the genitorial contract. I had absolutely nothing to do about that contract. It doesn't come out of my budget, it comes out of the CAO's office. So I guess I'm going to have to start doing what Mr. Trump does, is yell fake news, fake news, because people are consistently stating stuff that is untrue. I have nothing to do with that contract, period. It was never in my wheelhouse, the contract when SEI was doing it was not in my wheelhouse. So I absolutely did not have anything to do with that. And for people to make assumptions and make statements such as what Mr. Stevens did, I will use the term as a flat-out lie, because they don't know what's going on within the county's administration's office. So I just wanted to be clear. I didn't know. Ms. Keasy has been in this county for many years, she is an excellent cleaner, she has numerous contracts, which is why Mr. Lutz approached her. It had nothing to do with the sheriff or the sheriff's office. Thank you.
With that contract... puts them, meaning the sheriff's department, in a shaky position, and it should have been easily seen. As far as Trump is concerned, I think he's a big boy, and he's been taking pretty good care of himself, and I'm proud of him. I'm not proud of what our governor is choosing as his priorities, trying to make it faster to get to LA, and trying to siphon all our water off to LA. I don't agree with that, and he's taking all that money and putting it in those two projects. In the meantime, he's letting California burn down, and I really have an objection to that. Now, when California burns down, they're not going to be replacing the forest, they're going to let brush go back, and I don't like that either. And I just think that there's a certain amount of insanity going on. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Morning. Just want to say, I don't like being in the cast of characters who always come up here. I don't like the spotlight, I don't like listening to myself talk, I dislike the camera, and most of all, that timer. I don't like criticizing you, I'd rather compliment you on a job well done, or just stay home, trusting you to do your jobs. I'm sure you'd rather I did too. So come on, you guys, work with me. Last week, I requested the chair correct what I believe was a violation of Section 54954.2D3 of the Brown Act by way of the motion directing staff to set up so-called town halls by agendizing it for public comment. And the chair, as usual, summarily ignored my request, didn't bother to ask counsel for an opinion. From the moment that passed on July 10, everything about the process has lacked transparency and opportunity for public input. The planning, preparation, schedule, format of the meetings, allocation of public funds has been done outside the public's view without informed consent of the governed. It's clear you don't want our input and are doing whatever you can get away with to avoid it, but I'm going to give you as much as my three minutes allows, anyway. The fake town halls are kind of a fraud, like propaganda. We want to ask our elected representatives questions to find out if you understand the policies that you're implementing half as well as we do. The sham setup where questions are submitted for selection out of public view looks like an effort to sift out tough questions, choose softballs from a handful of sycophants, and maybe even let staff and officials insert questions that cast the BS policy that is 8.06 and its proponents in a favorable light. Town halls should happen face-to-face, in real time. You shouldn't get to vet our questions and show up with canned, rehearsed responses coached by staff out of public view. So come on out of the closet, I challenge you to throw away your cue cards and just converse with us like real people, earn our trust and respect. And I encourage every citizen and member of the public who asks a question about 8.06 to direct it to your supervisor, not the staff that wrote it. Hold their feet to the fire, don't let them turn this into a fake staged campaign event at public's expense. I want to believe the people of this county deserve better, but maybe the people who don't show up and call you on this crap are getting the government they deserve. Jefferson nailed it when he said, "The price of freedom is eternal vigilance." Couldn't agree more.
Good morning. Beth Whitkey, District Five. I have a couple of questions. Well, first off, county council, is it legal for candidates to campaign during public comment? Because that seems a little not fair. So I'd like you to address that, possibly. Also, the Candace Keasy contract, I noticed something that Supervisor Mills said. You were talking about background checks, and you mentioned that you have a red badge background check, you know, federal, I think from your time as a contract laborer at Livermore or something. I'd like to see some documentation that shows that, and I'm also curious if your wife and if Kevin Ost were background-checked before they were allowed access to your emails, because that seems like that could be problematic. I've passed background checks. It's not an easy process, it takes over a year, or up to a year, and I just feel like anybody that has access to sensitive county emails should be background-checked, and that should be made public. I think it should be made public if county supervisors have a staff who decided that. You know, I submit an application for the Area 12 Agency on Aging Advisory Commission. It's been about six months that I've been going through the process of possibly being able to volunteer on this commission, and this morning, I withdrew my application, because I'm happy to pitch in, but I was informed that it would have to be vetted through the Board of Supervisors, and I really don't see that happening with this board. I think that I would get some pushback, and it's somewhat humiliating to volunteer your time and be put through a lot of different steps and processes, only to have the sense that you're not particularly popular with the board, so you probably wouldn't get a fair hearing. So I'm going to find other ways to plug into the community. So I really would like some answers with that, because I see people come up here week after week, and we tell you our concerns, and we ask our questions, and we don't get any answers from anyone. I think it's our right as taxpayers, as your constituents, that you talk to us, even if you don't like us. I think it's important that you talk to county staff, even if you don't like them. And I'm aware that you don't, that you freeze certain people out. I think that that's unprofessional, and I would like to see you elevate your behavior, especially, you're my supervisor, I don't want to hear any more profanity from the dais, and it's not that I have, I'm that delicate in my sensibilities, I just think you need to comport yourself in a more professional way. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. George Frye. I would like to see a report at every board meeting of the sweeps of marijuana farms. Not so much the low-hanging fruit of the people that are already on the list, but the cartels, the Mexican mafia. I would like to hear a report maybe once a month, so that we have some transparency about what's going on. I don't dislike the sheriff, but I'm concerned about going after the low-hanging fruit, which is all of the people who jumped through all of the hoops, and then bait and switch was performed on them. That's my issue. It's an issue that has to do with dishonesty, and some of you on the board get it, some of you on the board will never get it. So please bring a report on the sweeps that you do, so that there's more transparency. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Benjamin Stopper, District Five. Understanding part of the process here during public comment, you're not to respond to us because it's not on a specific agenda, but applying to how we proceed. And understanding that a candidate coming to the board and speaking up for himself is legal, in my mind, whether it's ethical and the way they go about it is another question. Something that wouldn't be legal would be someone behind the dais supposedly getting paid going for candidacy, speaking up for or against anybody else when it comes to electioneering, so on and so forth. Something I am really for is transparency. Process. There's a lot of questions out there about certain roads getting paved in certain areas that wasn't voted on by a majority of the board before the session of, during open session in front of people. How many decisions are made during closed session under the guise of possible litigation? These things are usually open to public purview, and we personally, and many people I talk to, would like more transparency and have our voices heard when it comes to these instances. And I believe that, you know, when it comes to public works and many other, you know, planning, that a majority board vote should be the direction of what the county does. And it's something to consider as we work forward, gentlemen. There's a lot of questions out there these days about, you know, how much is following the proper process, so on and so forth. We need transparency, and people need to know how these decisions are being made. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak?
Good morning, Board.
Hold on, Al, is there any other people who would like to speak for public comment? Anyone else? Okay, we'll have the two speakers, then we'll close public comments.
Thank you, and good morning. Al Segalat, Taxpayer Association. When we recommended that the custodial contract go out to bid, it was not implying that there was any sort of collusion going on with the sheriff's office. We happen to know that, we really respect Candace Keasley, she's received our Excellence in Public Service Award, and she's totally dedicated to helping the county, particularly the sheriff's office. I think it was just a normal mistake that occurs once in a while, and it's pretty hard to be a manager with so many responsibilities, and to be completely flawless and never make a mistake. So that was just a mistake that Tim made, which he admitted, and so it's really a dead issue. I really believe that if the sheriff were aware that she was going to get the contract without a bid, he would urge that it go to bid. He knows what kind of consequences it could have if bidding was avoided, particularly with her background and support of the sheriff's office. And, thank you.
Hi, guys. Ralph Copeland, District Four. Sheriff De Basilio changed my little speech regarding his armored car. Back in April, I believe, or early spring, De Basilio was with another candidate at a meet-and-greet, and Sheriff Rick, just for the sake I get tongue-tied with De Basilio, he said, "The county has five million dollars of Measure C money, and I'm going to be very stern that we need to set aside enough for three to four years for the team." I'm assuming that's the eradication team. What was Sheriff De Basilio speaking about? Was he incorrect? He says, "The county has five million of Measure C money, and I'm going to be very stern that we need to set aside enough for three to four years for the team." So, two hundred thousand out of that five million shouldn't be a problem for his armored vehicle, right? Think about it, okay? Where did he get this five million dollars of Measure C that's not around anymore? Next, Little John Road. "Dennis, good job on the paving. We need striping and shoulder work to complete your job." That's been over two months now. If there's an accident on there, another lawsuit, Mr. Toffenelli, just like the threat of lawsuit throughout the cannabis vote. You've got a threat of lawsuit now, with possibly someone crossing, someone hitting those signs. By the way, you're probably missing about ten of the barricades with the low-shoulder sign, so you can add that to the tally. And did any of you four supervisors figure out how he got Little John Road paved with next year's budget? Were you all okay with it? Did some of your projects get put aside so he can get ninety-three votes and not have to go through a recall? By the way, your mandate, Mr. Mills, is out the window. Your mandate now is ninety-three votes, or signatures, excuse me. You ran against yourself, and you almost lost. Only ninety-three votes saved you from a recall. That's not good. You've got to change your little spiel about that you have a majority, supporting majority. Anyway, gentlemen, Little John Road, get a stripe, finish up the shoulder work, get your job done for a change. Gentlemen, talk to your constituents, explain to them how this happened. Thank you, guys. Ladies.
We'll close public comments, then we'll take a ten-minute break. All right, we're back in session. Madam Clerk, Consent Agenda?
Consent Agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the Consent Agenda for later discussion.
Any Board members which to pull an item?
Number seven.
Number seven. Any other item? Any staff member?
Yes, I would like to withdraw item number 12. And we're going to be, this is at the request of the contractor, and we would be bringing it back on August 7th at this point.
Okay. Any other staff member? If not, any member of the public? Yes, come to the microphone, please.
Bill McManus, could you pull item eight, please?
Eight? Any other item?
Number 13.
Number 13. All right. We'll bring it back to the Board. Looking for a motion for the remaining items on the Consent Agenda.
So move the remainder.
A motion by Supervisor Mills.
I'll second it.
Second by Supervisor Clapp. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Moving on to item number seven. Madam Clerk.
Item seven is from Behavioral Health Services Mental Health Program to adopt a resolution to authorize the Director of Health and Human Services Agency to sign the Mental Health Plan Agreement Number 17-94576 with the Department of Healthcare Services for the provision of specialty mental health services and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services Agency to sign Amendment Number One to the Mental Health Plan Agreement Number 12-89357 with the Department of Healthcare Services for the provision of mental health services.
Supervisor Mills, you pulled this item?
Yes. Thank you, Chair. The question is revolving around page 85 of our packet where it says the agreement is between the state agency and the contractor. The state agency being the Department of Healthcare Services, the contractor Calaveras County Behavioral Health Services, and for the period to expire. It says in the maximum amount of $8,113,337,000. Do we have an agreement with the state as the contractor here for that amount?
Kristen Brink's Health and Human Services Agency. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. So, no, in, just for a direct answer, that actually is the statewide amount. All counties are required to utilize the exact same templated contract that's been approved by the Federal Center for Medicaid Services, and this is the templated contract. This is the amendment to the previous version, so as to not have overlapping contract terms, and the state's requiring us to sign both the amendment and then as well as the going-forward five-year contract. You'll see in the new one, they learned that this drew the attention of many Boards with the exact same question, so they revised that to just be a $0 amount and then all the regular funding sources go as is. So, no, Calaveras County does not have $8 billion to provide mental health services, but the state does in totality.
Thank you. I noticed that the rest of it looked pretty clean. It was just that did not make sense as the agreement was written.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll bring it back to the Board. Looking for a motion?
I move the item, Chair.
Motion by Supervisor Mills.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Olivera. Call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Moving on to item number eight.
Number eight is from the Sheriff's Office to award an RFQ Number 170324-19-968 for as-needed cannabis eradication services to the sole qualified respondent, Dirty Works of Sutter Creek, California, and authorize the Chair to execute an agreement for the same in the amount of $100,000 for a term to expire June 30th, 2019.
Good morning, Jim Macedo, Captain, from the Sheriff's Office. The agreement is, as noted by the Board Clerk, there was a process that we went through to get to this, this point. I know it was pulled by the public, so I'll step back and address any questions.
Mr. McManus, you pulled this item? You had a question?
Yes, maybe, maybe more than one.
That's fine.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to find out how this contract fits in with so many of the other contracts that have been before the Board for approval. In the past, you've had truck lines with, under contract, to haul dope down to the landfill. You've had helicopter contracts. You've, you know, purchased all sorts of equipment, which were for a certain period of time, and I think one or two of them had even an extension period to go with it. So where does, where does this contract fit into this whole scheme of assets that are being pulled together for one purpose, and that's to take care of abatement? Since it was on the agenda as from the Sheriff's Office, I take it that only the Sheriff's Office has control over the services of this contractor. And as such, these would all be, or at least the majority of them would be criminal actions since the sheriff doesn't get involved with too many of the civil matters. So is there some way we find out how these contractors are working with the Sheriff's Department? Who's going to be the first person to step on site? Has the site been cleared? Has there been any hazmat triage done when we've got contractors and personnel going onto the property? What we've found is it's very difficult to get the protocols and get them all put together. There's two chains, two flow charts that run concurrently. One is the civil and one is the criminal. We'd like to know who is in control of these and where do they come to together? Is there a nexus anywhere for services, results, DA, whatever the case may be? I've asked, I've requested public documents. If you don't ask for the right thing in exactly the right way, you don't get it. You just get a letter back saying, we don't have that. So I'd like to see about maybe getting a meeting with whoever's in charge of this, if anyone is really in charge, that coordinates between the civil and the criminal actions that are taking place and where this contract fits in. Is this going to be strictly for criminal actions taken over by the Sheriff's Department? And I'd like to know with $100,000 contract and looking at the schedule of equipment and personnel and everything else that this contract allows for, what would, I know there's no such thing as an average grow, but if we could come up with an average grow or pick a number like 1,000 plants, how many grows would be eliminated or abated with a $100,000 contract? And also, since this is a multi-year contract, can you spend money in the out years, years two and three, move those forward into year one if you need the services this year? So I know that's a lot, but it's a complicated subject. We're just trying to get it straightened out. Thank you.
Yes, the question I have is where is this $100,000 coming from? Is it from general fund? And has any consideration been made to contract with a lab or another entity which processes marijuana rather than destroys it? And that may take care of having to spend money on illegal grows to abate them? Thank you.
Any other public comments, questions? If not, Captain Macedo.
I was writing as fast as I could. Let me see if I can address a few of these. This is not a Sheriff's Office contract. It was run jointly with the County Admin Office. If you look at the, the front of the Agenda item, we requested assistance from the County Admin Office and it was a, a multi-department group that reviewed the applications. Secondly, how does this fit with the other contracts that we have? Depending upon the size of the grow, the terrain of the grow, whether it's criminal or civil or both, which at times it is both, we make an assessment on whether or not we have the equipment in-house, meaning within the Sheriff's Office and/or code enforcement, and we make a determination at that point whether we can remove it without using a subcontractor. We try to use our own equipment and our own staff to remove it. We do have trailers, but sometimes the grows or the scope of the operation exceed what we have as far as equipment in-house. That's what these contractors are for. They help come in and expedite the process. This particular contract has a subcontractor that actually will deliver a bin to the site and the driver has to wait there, and there's some security protocols that go on with that driver and with that bin to make sure that we're not losing any of the marijuana and that it's transported securely and safely to where it, where it could be dumped. As to how this contract fits with code enforcement, this contract is predominantly for criminal investigations. However, we do joint cases with code enforcement. Sometimes there are criminal violations that are running concurrently with county code violations, so they're not always entirely separate. Who steps in and does the hazmat evaluation? And I'm not sure what the question was behind that, but we have staff trained in our marijuana unit. We have PPE for those employees, and that's covered under a pre-incident briefing that all employees go through. And the subcontractors work at the direction of Sheriff's Office personnel on scene at the event. That's who they take their direction from and that's who they are monitored by. There was a question about average grow, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to complete writing down the entirety of that question, Mr. McManus. If you're wanting to know what the size of an average grow is, it's really dependent. Can we move money out into years two or three? The contract sits at as-is. We are bound by the scope of that contract, so if anything is going to exceed that contract, we would need to come back to the Board and/or get a signature from the CAO if we were going to move away from that. Obviously, County Council would be involved. The lab, as far as the Sheriff's Office, working or, or working with a lab to do something with the marijuana, I don't think the county would appreciate us taking marijuana and shipping it off to a lab to be used by someone else. I think there's an inherent amount of litigation associated with that. Once it touches our hands, we are responsible for it, and we certainly don't want to put that back into the public or lose control of that, that, that product or what have you. I think there would be a significant amount of liability, and I don't think the Sheriff's Office should be in the business of handing marijuana over to any lab other than a testing facility for evidentiary purposes. I believe that answers the public's questions. So is there any questions from the Board?
Where does the money come from? $100,000?
The money comes from the general fund, and that was discussed during several previous Board meetings.
Supervisor Clapp, your lights on?
Nothing.
No? All right. Thank you, Mr. Macedo. Any other questions, comments? Call for a motion?
Mr. Chair, so move the item.
The motion by Supervisor Olivera.
I'll second that.
Second by Supervisor Clapp. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item number 12 withdrawn by the CAO. Do we need a motion or a vote on that to remove it? No? So we'll move on to item number 13.
Item 13 is from the Administrative Office to approve the fiscal year 2018-19 Administrative Match Agreement between the County of Calaveras and Area 12 Agency on Aging in the amount of $89,892 and authorize the Board Chair to sign the agreement.
Bonnie, you pulled this? You had a question?
Yes, I did. Where does this $89,000 come from? Is it from the general fund? And who is matching it? If the Area 12 Agency on Aging encompasses four counties, am I to understand? Does each county contribute $89,000 or is it rationed out according to the population? And, and what is the money used for? Thank you.
Any other public questions on this item?
I guess I could answer Bonnie's questions. I'm on the Area 12 Advisory Commission. It's done by population of the four counties, Mariposa, Tooluma, Calaveras, and Amador. And I think we're about in the middle in terms of the money that is spent every year for it. And it's used for a myriad of things that Area 12 on Agency is, is doing.
Take in on the microphone.
Okay. How's that? So anyway, I, I support this, so I just wanted to let you know.
That is public. CAO, this is your...
Yes. In clarification, and as Mr. Frye stated, that yes, it is the breakdown is based on population within the four, I'm sorry, the five JPA counties, Alpine, Amador, Calaveras, Mariposa, and Tooluma Counties. The funds are used as required match. They are general fund in answer to Bonnie's question, and that's specifically stipulated with Older Americans Act and Older Californians Act that there needs to be the local funding match. Primarily, you're looking at, it's federal dollars because there isn't much left on the state side for money that it's pulling down. Services that it provides in those counties include our congregate nutrition sites at our senior centers, our home-delivered meal sites, social support services, social work for assisting older adults access what available programs there are, caregiver support programs for some of the homebound seniors to get respite care. Those types of services are what the match goes for.
Bring it back to the Board. Looking for a motion?
I'll move that.
A motion by Supervisor Clapp.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Mills. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. We'll now move on to the regular agenda, and at this time, the Board will recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Air Pollution Control Board. So, Madam Clerk, item number 18.
Item 18 is from the Air Pollution Control District. Acting as the Air Pollution Control District Board, authorize the CAO to sign grant agreement with the California Air Resources Control Board to implement AB 197 Emissions Inventory.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Brett.
I'm here this morning as your Air Pollution Control Officer, and our air district, your air district operates without general fund monies, and we want to keep it that way. And in order to keep it that way, I've got a couple grants that we're applying for. And this first one is this Assembly Bill 197 that we'd request that, that the CAO be authorized to sign it. Assembly Bill 197 was signed into law in September 2018, and the overall intent of that Assembly Bill was to give the legislature more control over the California Air Resources Control Board. And it did that through appointing non-voting members to their Board, having term limits and a number of things. But part of that Assembly Bill was to establish this Emissions Inventory District Grant Program. It seems like all the programs we have now are really becoming more and more driven by data, and the state wants to put into this integrated emissions visualization tool. We're going to end up working on that with the state one way or the other, and this agreement would give us some resources to help defray some of our costs.
Any Board questions? Any questions from the public on this item?
Vicki Ranke, Angels Camp. I read some of this as to what the inventory would be, but I would hope to have better explanation. Are we going to decide whether we contribute to air pollution? What's the end result of this? And maybe my question is because I don't see a big need in Calaveras County for any of this craziness about our air pollution and global warming and all those things. So I wanted to know what this will help us with? Or are we just going to be rubber-stamping something to the state that, that doesn't really... Or are we just going to be rubber stamping something to the state that doesn't really pertain to us? Thank you.
Any other public comments on this?
I'd like to address the California Legislature and the governor. They are the ones that are polluting the air. They are not giving enough money to the fire people so they can hit it hard and fast so it doesn't get away. And I think that we could do without those tunnels, stifling our water off to someplace else so that we can take a shower in a thimbleful of water. I think that the environment would be a lot better off if we did not allow these fires to get away. Thank you.
Any other public comments? If not, those public comments? Brad, you want to try and answer some of the questions?
Sure. One of the first things I asked the air board is, well, what happens if we don't do this? You know, we don't agree to this grant. Well, we're still going to be essentially doing the same work. It has to do with being on conference calls and helping put together this visualization tool that's required by the legislature because of this assembly bill anyway. I asked where the money came from. The money came from, when the legislature passed this, the air board went back with a supplemental budget and that's got this funded. Regarding our need for it here, the speaker was essentially right. We have one facility in the county that would qualify for this reporting and that's all we have. So I guess this money is just going to help us pay for our costs and time, of staff time that we'd be spending anyway, working on this project, assisting the state, participating in conference calls, giving input.
Is there a timeframe to use this money?
This for, it's for the year, yeah.
For the state's fiscal year, September?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Is there any other board questions? Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, on page 205, this has to do with your milestone descriptions. And it says that there's a submittal of the draft final report to CARB on March 1st, 2019. Are we going to be on time in getting that information to them or you don't see that as really being a difficult?
I don't. We only have one facility.
So it's just a matter of going and getting that information, pulling it together, putting it, plugging it in.
Correct.
So this is only to cover the administrative costs, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Any other board questions? If not, look for a motion.
So move.
I have a motion by Supervisor Garmendi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Olivera. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Passes five zero. We'll move on to item number 19. Madam Clerk?
Item 19 is also from the Air Pollution Control District. To authorize the board chair to sign the grant memorandum of understanding between CAP/COA and the District for implementation of the Wood Smoke Reduction Pilot Program and find exempt from CEQA.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this program is a little bit more exciting, a little more positive than the last one because this actually will fund replacement of uncertified old wood stoves with new certified ones. It's based on an income criteria so that if you're a lower income, it would basically pay for the whole replacement installation. If you're above that income level, it would pay some thousand dollars towards it. And I do know that we get complaints about wood burning stoves and smoke that settles in and inversions, you know, up in our foothills. And nobody wants to see an ordinance mandating something like this. But this is a purely incentive program to encourage people to swap out those stoves. And there's $5 million that was set aside in AB 1613 for this. There's more money available. We don't really know what the demand will be here in our county, but it'll be interesting to find that out and put together this program for that.
Board questions? Supervisor Mills?
I'm going to flip this to a what if. And that is, what if this moves from an incentive to a mandatory program? And how quickly could that occur?
That's a possibility always and everything, so I couldn't answer that question.
My concern is that we may be wanting them voluntarily to come and participate. But for those who do not wish to do so, at what point are we going to be doing like Modesto where we're looking at the smoke stacks and finding people because they're burning to keep their house warm because they can't afford to do it any other way? And we do have those kind of homes in our communities.
That is definitely a valid concern. I don't know that passing on this grant and savings to people is going to impact that possibility, you know, one way or the other. But there's always that concern that something starts small and it gets larger, you know, so. But I don't think that this program here is going to make a difference one way or the other, so.
You know, I look at the 95 cent water tax and how quickly that could morph into something much more serious for the rest of the consumers. This likewise, to me, is just a beginning step of putting something a foot in the door here in the foothills and getting us to do something that may not be something that we really want. So I just have some concerns.
Supervisor Garmendi, I think your light was on.
How are you advertising, promoting this program?
We haven't started that yet. I'm not sure exactly how we would do that. That'd be part of implementing this thing would be to get the word out there.
When you begin to move forward on that, if you could bring that to the Board of Supervisors, not for approval, but so we could help you, this is a great opportunity for our citizens. I want to make sure they're aware of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Supervisor Olivera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with Supervisor Mills. In my district, we live in the mountains. A large percentage is wood burning stoves. And once again, I'd be very concerned with the fact that it's advisory now and here's a chance to help those that want to convert. But what happens when it becomes mandatory? I think it's a little bit too premature. I wish we had more information to see what's going to be in that crystal ball. But the bottom line is I've seen this occur in numerous counties down in the Bay Area where wood burning stoves are a luxury to some, if you will. There are days you don't use wood burning and those days are increasing. So I don't think I'm real supportive of this program right now, to be quite honest with you.
If I could just comment real quickly on that is we do have complaints that come in from your district about smoke. And to me, something like this is probably the best way to prevent government coming in and doing a mandate. I know that if the board opposes that, your district would oppose it very strongly. But to me, something like this, it's an incentive, might actually be preventive from what you're concerned about, so.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yeah, I would support this because if they come in and ban it anywhere, they're going to ban it. At least this year is funds that will be for people on low income that can't afford to do it. And so at least make that available for people that don't have the funds to do it. This is basically a grant that will be going to people that are low income that can actually do the update. Without it, they're just likely heat their house.
Any other board comments? Seeing none, I'll open up the public. Public comments?
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association?
Al, can you go back and get in line? There were several people that were in line waiting to speak.
You know, I didn't get too concerned until I started lighting the bonfires and then getting pitchforks there.
Thank you.
Ben Stoffer, District 5. No offense taken, Al. I grew up in these mountains. It's been a favorite pastime, going out in the woods, being a provider, cutting the wood, keeping our houses warm. When I looked to buy a new house in the past, it was, a wood stove was part of that house when I looked for a house. You know, it's something, it's not just a cheaper way of heat. It's part of a pastime that, you know, I grew up with and I appreciate. This time, I agree with Supervisor Clapp and this grant's providing a service. The way I see it, and my question would be, is if they change state law, would this agenda item here prioritize that into law in Calaveras County? I would assume you would need another agenda item to be approved and that this would in no way stomp on our rights when it comes to having a wood burning stove and using it. That law would come down in the future and at that point, you as a board would need to approve that and push the process forward. My other question would be, what actual type of cleaner wood burning stove is required? And how do they facilitate that being put into people's houses, so on and so forth? Thank you.
Jennifer Stewart, District 2. I totally disagree with this thing. I have a wood burning stove, a cook stove, and an insert. The possibility of us contributing to smoke and carbon in the air for what we deal with with fires around here is just so minimal. I can't even imagine four of my lifetimes that I would put up even a smudge that would compare to anything that happened with the Bu Fire, what's going on with Ferguson and everything. I see this as a power grab. I see it where the government wants to get in everything in my life and I don't want it. I plain and simple don't want the government in my wood stove. I would put in a catalytic converter if that's necessary. If my neighbors were complaining, I'd do it. And if we have a bunch of neighbors that are up in your area, we could have some volunteer group of people who say, let's pool some money and do this. We just did it for the people whose house burnt down. You know, there's other ways to do this besides letting the state of California get in our back pocket one more time. I can't see it.
Vicki Ranky, Calaveras Republicans. We just had our board meeting and we talked about this issue. So I wanted to make comments and we are in agreement with Supervisor Mills and Supervisor Olivera that this could just lead to something we really don't want in our county. So my first comment was programs that take from one part of our economy or our taxpayers to pay or redistribute to another for the benefit of government control. This is happening everywhere and quite frankly, we watch it, we're tired of it as citizens. And this is one more. I agree that it's a power grab, yet sounds wonderful that we're going to help some people of low income. But whatever happens to that is the people who can't afford it, get it. The people who are wealthy can do it. The people in the middle always get squeezed out of all of this stuff. And then it becomes mandatory, which I believe in new construction, it is mandatory, isn't it? So see, they've already done that to anybody in the future that comes here. They cannot have a wood stove anymore, so they can't use the free wood that's on their properties. This is very frustrating. And some of the questions were asked that I had. And this subject is in the new EIR for the general plan. In the EIR, they want it put into the general plan that we will incentivize people to switch out their wood stoves. Again, why are we doing this? Why are we telling individuals how to live their lives? If we had a real big pollution problem, that would be another thing, but I'm not so sure that we do. With 45,000 people in this county of, I forget how many thousands, 100,000 acres or whatever. Because I agree, the problem is when we have forest fires and does our state do anything about that to prevent those things? No. So again, just, we hope that you will think like that as our representatives. You look at us as the people and not just follow along with what the government's putting down on us and doing to us. And I had the question, is this enough money? And it sounded like that might be enough money to pay for one of those units. I'm trying to see. And what is a certified wood stove? What does that look like? And they have to destroy any old stoves? Again, someone who can't afford anything now has nothing. They did that with cars when they did the car program through the state. Well, we're just going to crush all the old cars. Well, guess what that did? It left poor people with no means of a transportation because they can't afford a new car. And there's supposed to be a training. Are they kidding me? Thank you.
No, Al, no.
Thank you. Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. We concur with Vicki. She, even though she went over time, she hit the nail on the head. We don't need more regulations. There is no problem with wood burning stoves. 20 years ago, we had changes to improve the amount of smoke by installation of catalytic converters. And where you buy a new stove, it had to have the catalytic converter. It made sense. It worked. We don't need any more state regulations. And also, we don't need anything that smells of Agenda 21, which is about crushing our economy. We don't need scarcity. We don't need to have, to live our lives chasing scarcity. No more. Stand up to it. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Sarah Kancy Ennich. I'm from District 1. I have a wood stove and we use it all winter long and I'm pretty sure it's a newer version that doesn't emit any type of air pollution. It has filters and whatnot. And forgive me, I don't know the, it's a catalytic converter. We have that. But I think this is being blown way out of proportion. I think what we're talking about is funding to help people replace older stoves that might be inefficient and contribute to air pollution with new versions with free money. So I don't think it is, right, it's grant money that we're talking about. $5 million, he said, and it's going to be given to people who would want to use that to make their stoves more efficient or, you know, less likely to contribute to air pollution. And so I don't think this is a government grab or anything like that. I think what it is, is grant money to help people have more efficient stoves. And that's all. Thanks.
Good morning. I'm from District 2 and when I had to rebuild my house, I have one of those catalytic converter stoves too. And so I really don't think this is an issue. I don't think we need the government involved. I don't think we need somebody telling us that we have to switch out our stoves and then the next thing you know, they're going to tell us we all have to have sprinklers in our house that didn't do any good anyway. So I just feel that this is just one more thing that the government's trying to tell us to do. Thank you.
I'm Will Moore from Rancho Calaveras and all I am is puzzled. And I don't know who is granting what to whom. It says authorize the chair to sign a grant, but who is granting what to whom? I guess I should have read the packet, but anyhow, it's kind of confusing. Thank you. I do have a wood stove, but there's never been a fire in it, so.
I'm District 1. Some of my questions have been asked, I'll ask them again. It doesn't tell us on here what kind of, again, wood stove... here what kind of, again, wood stoves you're going to have to convert over to. We happen to be a home that heats our home with wood. I know at some point, our stove's going to need to be replaced, and then we're going to automatically have to upgrade it because we can't buy an older one and put it in there. And I hate to burst anybody's bubble this morning, but there's no such thing as free money. It all comes from somewhere. We also know a lot of seniors that heat their homes with wood as well, and I know there've been times when free wood was available. I know when they were building the new courthouse, they were giving away wood from the trees they dropped down, and that helped a lot of seniors that, you know, needed something inexpensive to heat their homes. Is this going to be wood pellet stoves? What are you switching to? You force people to a wood pellet stove, they can no longer cut their own wood and burn it, then they have to purchase that. You're forcing them then to pay for their energy where a lot of people can get it for free. You know, it's very tempting to say, "Yeah, I want to get that free money and upgrade my stove now," but there's just not enough information here. What are they telling us that I've got to upgrade it to? What is my fuel going to then be? Because if we can't heat our home with wood, the cost of heating our home with propane just wipes us out during the winter. We've tried it. It costs three times as much to heat with propane as it does with wood. Our one fireplace will heat our entire house. And that's what we use. We've never had our neighbors complain about it. We've never complained about our neighbors who also burn wood. Even on those nights where the wood kind of sits down a little lower, we just keep, you know, you keep your windows closed, you don't have to smell it. Where I live, we also smell the campfires from Comanche, never complained about those, and I smell that, I think vacation, I think people are enjoying themselves. So we just need more information before we go forward with this, I think. Thank you.
I think that if Governor Brown and the state legislators are so concerned about our air and the quality of it and the environment, that they should try to give the fire people more money so they can hit the forest fires hard and fast. That is where we're getting air pollution all summer long, every summer. They need to give law enforcement the money to track down the people that are starting these fires, and they need to give the fire people the money to put them out quickly. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Yes, my question is for both of these air pollution control district agenda items. How much money is involved?
We've already covered the other one.
Yes, how much money's involved in each one of these grants? And I heard one comment, seven thousand. Is that seven thousand per person? Is that seven thousand for our county? And this is not a requirement, this is an option, an offer. And I remember a few years back when they were insisting that we change our refrigerators because our refrigerators were not functioning efficiently. And PG&E at that time came in for low-income people and replaced my refrigerator. And as I have one house with a wood stove, I know that it's not just pollution, creating less pollution, it's also to create more heat in the home. These stoves will be better, more efficient heaters using less wood and creating less pollution. So as an option and as a low-income person, I would be interested in replacing my old Franklin fireplace, very inefficient, but keeps my little hovel warm in the wintertime, with something more efficient, more updated, and if I didn't have to pay for it, I know I've already paid for it in taxes. So if it's available, I would like to see that opportunity extended to the people in Calaveras County.
All right, we'll close public comments.
Can I say something?
Sure.
From my understanding, it's a five-million-dollar program statewide. I think our share will be eighteen thousand dollars. If we don't take our share, that will go somewhere else. They're going to spend the five million dollars. And I would just like to see the eighteen thousand dollars come to our county so someone like Bonnie can upscale her heating system. And, you know, so, and this isn't mandating to anybody where they have to go out and do it. This is something like the refrigerations and stuff that people's qualified, it's to save energy. I don't see this as something that's putting something out there that you have to do this or you can't use your wood fireplace anymore. I have a wood fireplace in my house I love. They do make a new stove that you can actually do a wood burning stove, and it has a catalytic converter in it. They're very, very expensive. I hope I'm close to the number on these. Thank you.
Supervisor Mills, your lights on?
Yes, Brad, could you can correct the number on the grant?
The grant is for a hundred thousand dollars, ninety thousand of it for these voluntary replacements. Ten thousand dollars approximately is for administration of the program. So that would help our air district survive. It's totally voluntary. The stoves that you see in any store, those are all certified stoves. It also allows electric heat, propane, so those other sources are included in this too. And I just think that the best way to prevent more difficult government regulations in the future is to prevent the need for it now, and I think this is something that's a small step. We don't have a huge problem, but in the winter, when there's the inversion set in, the smoke does settle in the little valleys and things, so. Anyway, I don't know if that answered the questions.
How many, how many stoves or how many homes do you hope to affect with this grant?
Well, we really don't know what the demand is going to be because we don't know how many of those stoves are out there. But the grant is set up for thirty-five-hundred-dollar voucher for a low-income person, a thousand-dollar voucher for a person above that threshold, so you just have to kind of divide what and the other, I guess. We just don't know what the demand's going to be, Supervisor.
Yeah, you could be anywhere from twenty to ninety, just somewhere in that range, correct?
Yeah.
And there's over twenty thousand homes in Calaveras County? And so we're going to affect twenty to ninety residences out of twenty thousand, and this should make a big difference?
Well, every bit helps. There is more money actually available to get transferred in if there was a need for it. We chose not to go after additional money to find out, first of all, whether the demand would be here. But we would certainly try to do everything we could to get, to serve our people as much as we could with additional money if it becomes available.
The townsite of Vallesito is actually Spanish for Little Valley. It's that for a reason. It's because it's a pocket. And in the wintertime, with the inversion layers you talk about, yes, but it's part of living in that community. People who live there, they know what they're getting into. There's people who haven't lived in that and come from cities or somewhere else that suddenly move in and say, "Hey, wait a minute, I don't like the barking dog next door, I don't like the chickens in my yard, and I don't like the smell of smoke." I mean, good grief, there's got to be some limitations here as to why you live here. So I just wanted that number out there. It's going to be somewhere between twenty and ninety based upon the numbers that you're giving us now. Thank you.
Supervisor Olivera, your lights on?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I was, once again, going along that same road with you. I was just looking up the cost of wood burning stoves in California. These are replacement stoves, which are required by California EPA laws.
Yeah, they're the ones that you find in the stores.
Yeah, and they run anywhere from seven hundred dollars to four thousand dollars at a quick look. So if we've got ninety thousand, less than ten thousand for administration, or is it ninety thousand total? Probably looking about twenty-four, twenty-six stoves, depending if that's going to be a thirty-five-hundred-dollar thing. So I, once again, agree with Supervisor Mills. We are looking down the road that this could be mandatory to replace your existing stoves, which it is now under EPA law. So where are we going with this law? It seems like the law's already in place. Am I wrong?
Well, this was an assembly bill that made this money available. It's going to get spent on wood stoves.
I understand.
Maybe here, maybe not here, but it's, that was the purpose of it, is to do something to help their quality.
I'm still not convinced, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Garamendi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are simply talking about approving a grant that's going to bring money to help low-income people in our community. We're not debating global climate change or state of California. Therefore, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this grant.
I would second that.
Well, I have a couple of comments first. To answer Mr. Stoppers' question about state law, if state law comes down, there's nothing we can put in an ordinance to change the state law. The state law will be the state law as far as where we are on air control and what's required for us to do. This, again, is a voluntary thing, it's not mandatory. And again, we go back to advertising it to get it out there for people that want to take advantage of it, if they want to take advantage of it. They don't have to, it's not being pushed on them, it's not being told that they have to do it, it's not a law. In giving the way California has been going, and we will have a change of governors come November, with the current governor, I wouldn't doubt that sooner or later, as we go into the future, that this law will come effect. Right now, it's affecting the valley. You can't burn there on anything. Right now, this doesn't even affect people that have outside pits that they put on their property, on their balconies, not their balconies, but their back porches or whatever they sit around at night and burn. It's not affecting anything of that, but you can't even do that in the valley areas. There's just no burning at all. So I don't think this has anything to do with pushing that from some of the comments that I'd heard, pushing that on to anybody. Again, this is simply voluntary, and it's a mandatory thing, there's nothing mandatory to do about it. And so I would support it simply from some of the comments that I heard from Supervisor Clapp about low-income people not having the ability, having an old outdated stove that may be falling apart, that may be, they have to use because they have no other choice. If we get the advertising out there to them, at no cost to them, they'd be able to replace that. And it may be a benefit, and it may, actually, some of those old stoves, you just don't know what conditions some people are using. We may be saving some lives if they take advantage of this, that their house could be burned down simply because the flutes fall apart and what have you, so I am in favor of this. So I have a motion by Supervisor Garamendi, I have a second by Supervisor Mills.
Or Chair. Before you take action, I just wanted to clarify the item before you also includes a recommendation to make findings that this action is exempt from CEQA, and it's outlined in the memo before the board, so I would just ask that the board consider also making those necessary findings that this action is exempt from CEQA.
Chair, I'd like to modify my motion to accept this grant award and make this exempt from CEQA, finding that this is exempt from CEQA.
Can I have a second there? Your second stands. Okay, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before we call for a vote, I'd like to make a comment. In some research I've just got done doing on the websites regarding this issue, it's pretty much established that the EPA rules right now require that we have certified stoves. So I think we've reached that point in our government for the replacement. Having that knowledge, I would probably change my position on this, seeing that that threat has become a reality as far as government controlling what we do under the EPA laws. I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next, I have a motion by Supervisor Garamendi, a second by Supervisor Clapp. A call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes for one.
Thank you.
All right, this time, we will recess as the Air Pollution Control District Board and reconvene the Board of Supervisors and move on to item number twenty.
Item twenty is from the Economic Development Department to receive a semi-annual presentation from the Calaveras County Economic Development Department regarding economic development activities for the last two quarters of fiscal year 2017-18.
Good morning, Chair Tofanelli and Honorable Board. I have a short, brief presentation for you, and I'm ready to start.
No, push it down hard and hold it. There you go, you're on, you're good. Red light's on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kathy, you'll need to speak directly into the microphone.
Okay.
We should have took a five-minute break. Let her get set up. You need a five-minute break to get set up?
If you'd like to do that, that's fine.
Yeah, let's take five minutes and let her get her presentation. Good, we're back. No, push hard, there you go. Now you're there.
There we go. Hello. Kathy Galino, Calaveras County Economic Development. Thank you for having me today. Want to give a brief update on what I've been working on the last six months. So a little bit of brief history, and this is a history as I understand it. As far as economic development in Calaveras County, we had in seventy-six, the Central Sierra Economic Development District that was created. Unfortunately, it was closed in 2011 due to some economic difficulties and financial difficulties. It was resurrected, and which Calaveras County is a part of. I found this very interesting because we also work with Mariposa, Alpine, Tualamie, and Amador County is now a participant. They are engaging stakeholders and actually have been successful in obtaining a grant of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, which I will talk about later on in the presentation. That's for the five counties. We also have the Calaveras County Economic Development Company, which was a 501(c)(4). They're no longer around, but they have some great information and history and documents that I would like to migrate over to the county since they've already been created. And then, of course, in 2017, you wonderful people decided to actually have your own Calaveras County Economic Development Director, which I feel is a very important thing to have in our county, to be competitive and move forward. So the mission is to work collaboratively to attract, retain, and grow business that's here. We want to provide free and confidential assistance to businesses so that they can be successful and go forth and do well. We also want to enhance the economic viability and sustainability, not just for the businesses, but for the communities and the people that live here. We want to provide the tools for success and encourage a diverse array of businesses. A lot of times, businesses get, or economic development gets focused just on one industry. A lot of times, businesses get, or economic development gets focused just on one industry, whether it's retail, or housing, or whatever, it's nice to have a diverse array, and to really look at the different resources that we have available in our county through, you know, our natural resources, through our beautiful tourism and agriculture. And, of course, we want to preserve our history, so we want to be very careful in how we do things, and do things responsibly. So, the mission is to work collaboratively, there are many organizations that are out there that I've been working and meeting with, I've been pretty busy attending business association groups, rotaries, and working with the different, the Chamber of Commerce, the Visitors Bureau. Again, enhancing the economic viability of our county, and wow, this looks like a replete slide. Uh-oh, what happened? What happened? No. Pardon me. Goals. So, attracting the right business to the right area is crucial. There are many different parts of our county that have different resources, different land uses, so we need to make sure that when we're looking at attracting businesses, that we know what our inventory is, and know where these businesses can go, and connecting them to the right resources, so that they can not just open their doors, but be successful and grow. To do this, I'm working with the brothers and sisters of our county, and other leaders in our county to facilitate team meetings, so that we can understand, the businesses can understand what the expectations will be, what the timelines will be, so that things are realistic and very transparent. We want to explain the environmental regulations, as we all know, they can be difficult, and especially for a small business, very frustrating and changing, so it's nice to be able to provide that clarity to the businesses right out of the gate. We want to identify and develop business incentives, this doesn't just mean money, there's other incentives that are out there through our partner organizations and our utility providers, and we want to increase revenue to the county of Calaveras. Other actions are marketing. I cannot tell you how many people I've spoken to, not from here, that had no idea where Calaveras County was or who we were. To some regard, that's a good thing, because we are a small rural county, and we do want to respect and honor that, but we also have opportunity for responsible growth. So, I developed the economic development, I should say, actually, our IT folks developed the Calaveras County Economic Development website, and has been very, very successful in getting businesses and industry to my phone, to my email, and connecting us. We are on the homepage of the county website. And then, with that, and some encouragement, I developed the Facebook page, which at last count, I think we had 172 hits for last month, and working on brochures and handouts, which I think are important, to get the word out, and then attending business conferences and association meetings, rotaries, and talking to people. This is just such a great opportunity to get out and get the word out. So, the plan is for this fall, to work with my partner organizations, to actually do business walks, where we will be going into communities, and just talking to businesses, and finding out how things are going, are things going well, what can we do better? Do you have concerns, and why do you like doing business here? We want to make it short and brief, because business owners don't have a lot of time to chit chat, but we also want to let them know that we're here as a resource, and that we care. And then, obviously, collect that data in the survey form, and then report back. And from that, the plan is to develop a plan. We do not have a formal economic development policy, or a plan of strategic planning, so I really want this information, so that we can move forward and make good on our word. And also, working with other county agencies on developing fact sheets and flow charts. I'm not a flow chart person personally, but a lot of people like to have that map, so they can see, okay, I need to do this first, this second, so on and so forth, and it streamlines the process, which, and it makes it easier for the other agencies as well. So, in moving on with more actions, oh, stop, sorry. We want to determine where new or expanding businesses are in the process, we want to know the resources they need. I've received several calls, and I'll get to that in the end, and emails where a business might be midstream, or they've made a decision on a property selection or a lease, and they find out that their operations are not really permitted in that, and that there's going to be a change in use or operations. Trying to get that word out before businesses make those decisions is key, and knowing where they are, and what resources are available. Developing and promoting incentives, again, I talked about this, looking for funding opportunities for rural businesses through grant and loan programs. I met with a gentleman from the PG&E Economic Development portion, and was really amazed to find out that there is an economic development rate for new businesses that come here, they can receive as much as 12% off for a five-year period, there are strict requirements in that, they need to be, this needs to be used as an economic development tool, so a decision processed by a business to come here specifically to Calaveras County, that this would be one of the factors that would tip them in our way. So, then there's the Opportunity Zone Investment, which is free of capital gains, it's in Supervisor Garimendi's district, that was something that we were able to get in on, and still working through the IRS on what a defined Opportunity Zone Fund is, but it's a great way for bringing outside resources and funding to our county and disadvantaged communities. And then, the California Business Gateway, this is a wonderful tool for referring businesses to Calaveras County from the state. It is associated with their GoBiz program through the Governor's Office, and it's a great tool to get out there. Again, when I set it up with the state, they were like, where's Calaveras County? So, it was nice to show other agencies that we are here, and that we care, and that we're working hard. And then, the Recycling Market Development Zone, which we were approved by the state last month, so that was very exciting, so that will provide low-interest loans to businesses in Calaveras County who want to take a waste product and manufacture it into something else. This is the acronym soup, I'm not going to go into a lot of this, but these are just the different resources and opportunities and grants that I've identified. I am making meetings and appointments with, especially, EDA, Melinda Matson, I'll be meeting with her later this week, and, you know, there's a lot of opportunities that we'll be exploring, and these are things that I will be bringing before the board and our community to discuss, and see how we want to proceed. Obviously, as a department of one, I can't apply for every grant that I would see, but I think that we can strategically work with other organizations and groups to be very selective and be successful. And then, assisting in the workforce development and education outreach, there's a lot of opportunity there as well. I'll talk about the three-legged stool here in just a moment, but working with the business and industry, and especially the timber industry, and finding that there are some shortcomings with having skilled force, labor force, and that, you know, they get people in there, and they're there for a few months, and then boom, they're gone, and that's a huge economic toll on our community and our education system. So, working with the motherload job training, and the high schools, and different work groups, and then promoting the workshops and training for businesses, and this is primarily through the Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce, where they have some great workshops for businesses to attend, that can help them with, you know, simple things, bookkeeping, it's not simple, bookkeeping, legislation, and so forth. So, actions, creating and strengthening partnerships. The first four months, like I said, I met a lot of different folks, and trying to figure it out, figure out how we all fit together and work together, what our strengths and weaknesses are, there's some great people, and very energy flowing, this is a really good time right now. And then, as I said, develop the economic development policy and measurable outcomes. So, I started with a baseline of zero, which is interesting, I had nothing to start with or compare to, so, we're going to get to that on the next page. So, the solutions, supporting solutions to the three-legged stool, which is what I call it, whereas where we have business and development and growth, we have a skilled workforce, and yes, I'm going to throw it out there, we have a workforce housing. I've heard this over and over again, that we have people that are working that can't afford to live here, and I'm like, how can you not afford to live here, it's very comparable? But they're finding that there's not a lot of inventory, we need to start looking at making sure that we have homes and apartments available for people that are trying to work, and working collaboratively through investment, bringing outside dollars into Calaveras County, to research and explore changing and new opportunities, monitoring legislation, I try to do that in my spare time. So, and listen to what the businesses need, what they want, and it's very different community to community, just in the little bit that I've learned so far. So, by the numbers, I've worked with 36 new businesses, 10 existing businesses, and eight businesses that are considering expansion in our county. The potential for that is about 68 jobs. I've done 23 outreach and education events, reaching about 525 individuals, that was a lot of folks. I'm looking at 14 different grants and funding opportunities, and as I said, we have one regional application, we asked for $250,000 for the five counties in the Rural Economic Development Grant Funding, and we were awarded $178,000. And then, nine workforce development projects, working with 200 youth in our community, and three housing projects promoting 274 homes in our county. So, just a real quick overview, oh gosh, I really didn't even look at this stuff. So, one of the questions that people have asked me are like, what, who are you working with? Well, of course, I maintain my confidentiality, but I can give you the basics. So, in District One, primarily industrial manufacturing, construction and retail sales, agriculture and farming. District Two, we're looking at industrial manufacturing, food and beverage, timber, and property development and recreation. District Three, lodging, tourism, agritourism, retail sales, technology and education. District Four, food and beverage, agricultural farming, retail, and housing. District Five, medical services, housing, construction, transportation and retail. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions by the board? Supervisor Garimendi, your light's on.
Thank you, thank you, Kathy, it's been a pleasure working with you these last six months, as we've gotten to know each other. I have a couple of questions, and they kind of go on the line of, kind of taking a Lewis Carroll approach, where the cat said, if you don't know where you're going, any direction will do. And so, I was wondering if you could tell me, what does success look like in your role, and then how will you measure it?
I think the easiest way is with having a baseline of zero, and being able to track data, so, how many businesses are opening, at what point are they staying successful or closing? I'm trying to find more information as far as retail sales, what the data is, and a lot of it is going to be information that I probably will need to get assistance with. I'm kind of starting from nothing, and want to have something to compare by. So, at least in starting my little spreadsheet, I'm able to track, okay, we'll start at zero, also working with Barbara Sullivan, a business license, and tracking the business licenses as they come through, and also developing, I think I missed that part, the welcome packets, where when a new business gets a business license, to be able to actually send them information, like, here's the resources, we'd like to reach out to you, and then tracking that over time. I know there's going to be a new business license software program, so then also looking at when business licenses are closed, or businesses close, so there's going to be a compilation of data collection, and you're right, I'm kind of like, kind of scattered, and so there might be a time when I need to have maybe some software or something that can help me track the, what's most important to the board.
Should be measuring the net, basically, as we go forward. Third question is, we came on board, we talked about developing, and I know you mentioned this, a strategic economic development plan for the county. What do you see, and how's that coming along, and when will we, as a board, sort of take on that issue and contribute, and how's that all going to come together?
Good question. So, doing the business walks, which I hope to start this fall, the summer's a little bit hard to be out there walking and passing out, so I want to get that information this fall, and then, based on that information, provide recommendations to the board. My goal is to have something to you by the end of this year, that might be a little overly aggressive, but that's my goal, is to have something to you with recommendations, and have a policy that we can move forward on.
Thank you, I don't think it's being over aggressive, my businesses in my community are telling me offline that they're down, and so, having a plan so we can begin executing on it as soon as possible, we've got to have a, we've got to see the sun at the end of the tunnel. Thank you.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, Kathy, I appreciate your data, it's the second time I've seen it, and I've learned something again, simply because I didn't catch it the first time. Are you including Angels Camp data in your, in your work through?
Not technically, no. I certainly assist with businesses that are wanting to open in Angels Camp, by simply referring them over to, there's not really, there is a counterpart to me in Angels Camp, but not actively collecting that data.
I think considering the size of that community, and what it brings to the district that I'm in, having that data would be a helpful tool to us, because it does have a sphere, a sphere of influence to the rest of the county. Secondly, we know that the businesses in Copperopolis are up, and now that we've got the Copper Area Business Association revitalized and rolling again, there's opportunities within these business associations also to find out what their needs are, and where they find, their feeling, that you can to some degree be an ombudsman for them, breaking down some of those barriers, and I think oftentimes, new businesses don't understand the barriers that they have to get past, and they have enthusiasm, but that only lasts for about six months. If you've been in a restaurant business, you know, six months, and they seem to hit a brick wall. And now that I'm understanding that we have 40 new homes coming into Copperopolis here very soon, that's just one more step in that right direction of generating the housing element that we need so desperately within the whole county. So, thank you for what you're doing, and the role you're playing to assist them and relieve their frustrations, because a lot of it is that they just don't know where to go, or how to broach the issues, and they don't know what the priorities are, and where to tackle with what first, and so, that's hopefully the role you'll play with them, and getting their, their on the ground and making a success.
That's my plan.
Supervisor Olivera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kathy, great presentation, I know you're working very hard. In some areas, in some communities and counties, there's incentives for bringing in commerce, bringing in businesses, a good example may be the 40 homes going into the copper area. There's a procedure where some of those fees, the fees required, have been actually excused by counties to promote this business. Is that a successful program in your experience?
I have not seen it applied in a rural county. I know in, coming from Sacramento County, we did have some of those rebates or permit reduced fees, that is something that I certainly could look at as we go forward, but I have not seen it applied in a rural county.
Yeah, that was my question. If those systems are successful, would they be in a rural county, such as ours? Maybe we could take a little look at that, and come back to the board with some information?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, thank you again, and I know this is one of the challenges, simply because infrastructure is a key component to story, you're going to cite something, but if you're, if you're trying to put a fairly large piece on a lot, maybe we need to have some discussions with the water sewer districts, as well as PG&E, and what, in what ways can we ensure that the district will receive their full, full money, but it isn't an upfront hit, but it's spread out over five years, however that might, and I know that that's being done in other communities in California, so I would ask that possibly we look to those water and sewer districts, to see what, what they can give us to incentivize, especially promoting a new business in a location that probably would just, they're right at that thread, they just need that extra push to get us, get it there. And I'm referring to a situation occurred in Valley Springs back in 19... And I'm referring to a situation that occurred in Valley Springs back in 1992 myself, where because we could not get the assistance of a water sewer district, the, the company walked away, and they're currently in Garland, Texas. So, we have those opportunities. We just need to all work together and be on the same page.
Absolutely.
And we had that conversation, which I think you could be on the agenda coming up very soon, for one of those districts.
Okay. Yes, I mean, it's very important that we work with all of our providers, our utility providers, our broadband internet providers, everybody working collaboratively.
Kathy, I just have a quick question, and it's kind of in line with Supervisor Olivera's. At some point, is there a plan, once you get all this together, and later on in the year, and you get comfortable with what you're going to bring, bringing to the board, that you will actively be going out recruiting businesses? Once you find out where we have industrial areas, manufacturing areas, and retail areas, if you can actually go out and, and reach out and recruit businesses into the county?
Absolutely, that's the plan. Especially attracting the right business to the right location. As I alluded to, we have some pretty amazing resources here, and I'm actually, I mean, businesses actually do contact me with ideas. They're not ready yet, so I'm helping them grow their idea, put them in touch with resources and how to develop a plan. But certainly, being active in attracting the right types of businesses to the right locations and actively recruiting. We have some amazing opportunities here for the right businesses.
Any other board questions, comments? If not, we'll open up to the public, public comments, questions?
I'm making sure I'm not, don't hit anybody else. Al Sagan, Taxpayer Association. I'm kind of delighted with Kathy. We had her on a Taxpayer Alert program, and she did really well, and, and talked about, it's kind of interesting, her part of her plan, as she mentioned, is to, for the remainder of the year, to contact businesses to see what their, what their needs are, and then, after developing that, put together a plan of, of solving the problems that they may have, for, I guess, for retention purposes. I can just imagine, in a rural county like ours, with the, kind of conservative, how businesses would approach somebody saying, I'm from the government, I'm here to help We'd have to word that a little bit different. We'd have to really ask, what, what are the main problems you have, and then, so that we can see if we can solve them. I'm a board member of the Copperopolis Area Business Association, and we just had a meeting in which we're planning to put together packets for new businesses that come into the, that area. And one of the things that would be good for us to collaborate with Kathy, to put the packages together, we have more than just discount coupons, you could have information about county services and other things that relate to government that Kathy can help, help with. The Taxpayer Alert Program also sponsored, not sponsored, we also had a guest, Ken Perkins, who's suing Toowome County on economic development, lack of sunshine, in which he objected to, and so did the, the grand jury, maybe not as much disclosure of, of expenses that they thought would be proper with a government agency. That problem seems to be headed off a little bit with Kathy being careful to keep track of her expenses and go through the CAO for approvals on, and even though she can keep confidentiality for people she's dealing with, the confidentiality wouldn't be something that would likely be forever. In other words, disappears in a secret hole. Anyway, the taxpayer association is really happy to sponsor her on her program, and we'll see what develops over the, over the coming year.
Ben Stopper, District Five. I'm glad I waited for you to get up first, Al. You addressed a lot of things I was going to address. I went to the Chamber of Commerce meeting last Thursday, where they did their presentation. There was multiple other people from state agencies and so on, so on and so forth, when it came to economic development. Seems key that we do have a strategic plan moving forward, so I agree with Al about how this is proceeding, and moving forward, we, we do need to keep a strategic plan in mind, how we want to proceed with Calaveras County, and at the same time, with finishing the general plan in the future, we need to get, keep those in line, so that we know what types of uses belong where, and in our different areas within Calaveras County. One thing on reporting I would ask is, was something as big as this, with government getting involved with business, that reporting out more often than biannually would be crucial? Understanding that, look, they, you started from your 0.5 to 6 months ago. With your final page on there, your five-month overview, 36 businesses that are new, so on and so forth, I think it's crucial also that reporting how many businesses closed down. You could separate, you could separate that out by businesses that are closed down, by like, let's say, a ban, so those businesses, you know, had no choice but to close down. But also, other businesses that closed down, separate from any type of law that was passed that forced them out. Because that, you know, if you take in 36, but you lose 50, we're not making progress. 40 homes is good going into Copperopolis. We need more. When you talk about living wage, with the building permit fees being through the roof, and the cost of homes going in, you know, a living wage can afford an older house, because I, I recently am working on buying a second home, and I, through the loan process, I went through like, multiple amounts, and two, let's just say, for one example, I put down $250,000 with taxes and everything, we're looking at about $1,400 a month in payments, so on and so forth. So, a living wage, how does that apply, especially when it comes to new homes, and what we're doing to people with excessive permit fees, so on and so forth? That, this, this all comes together with part of the strategic plan. We need places for people to live when they get the jobs. Thank you.
Beth Wickie, District Five. I wanted to talk about the lack of housing, and the fact that 8.06 and the new building codes make it so that it's a disincentive to rebuild here. I have property in another state that does not require anything but electrical inspections and sewage inspections, and other than that, people are allowed to build what they deem safe, and if you can't, if it doesn't pass inspections, you can't sell your house, you can't get loans. So, I don't think that the housing options, you know, there is a lot of stock, there are not a lot of opportunities for people to find rentals in this county, because we lost so much in the Butte Fire. So, I would like to propose that next, like, along with the economic development part, we look at scaling back code compliance, barriers for people rebuilding in the burn scar. I think that that will promote more construction businesses. It will promote more, more people will be able to buy building materials in the now struggling D2 lumberyard. It's, it's really frustrating to hear, we don't understand why people can't find a place to live. When rents are through the roof, there's very few to choose from, and people just don't have any options. You know, it's, I bought in another district, because I'm probably going to have to start commuting to Sacramento to find a job. And I had a good job in District Two with cannabis. That ban destroyed my business. I may be able to get it back, you know, with my years of experience, and, but I just think it's important for economic development to take a harder look at some of the systemic issues in the county, where we don't have enough housing. I'm told that I have to put a sprinkler system in my house that doesn't have a neighbor for a quarter mile. My house didn't burn in the Butte, but it was damaged. If I had had a sprinkler system in the house, it would have been a total loss for water damage. These are all things the county can opt out of. And same with, you know, tempered glass. There's all these incredible barriers to rebuilding, and I just don't know how people are supposed to start businesses when the county revokes your permit after you spent all your money. And I think that we need to look at code compliance, and we need to look at some of these things, and instead of making them more onerous, make them more user-friendly. Thank you.
After looking at your presentation, I'm delighted you're here. It's just like, there's so hope now, that since there's an outlook that the ban is gone, and that the, the safety issue is not, not overwhelming anymore for a new business to come and be threatened by migrants and all this stuff. The whole attitude of Calaveras County is, we are a beautiful place. Visitors come here, there's, there's what you described as resources. It's so exciting to feel like there's promotion going forward in something that's going to be beneficial to all of us. If we get businesses, people come, houses get built, things just go. It's just like, the spark has to be ignited, and here it. I'm so glad you're here.
One of the reasons that housing is short is because people are growing marijuana in the houses instead of people living there. And I don't know how that affects her and her job, but it certainly affects people who want to move here and can't afford to. It affects people that live here and find themselves having to move and can't find a place that is within their means. And so, I just want to remind you that there is ongoing marijuana being grown in homes that could allow people to have a home and roof over their head. Thank you.
There's people standing in line back there.
I just wanted to tell you thank you for what you've been doing. I am an owner of a business, and one of the things that I had a question about is, what about incentives for existing businesses? PG&E is not any cheaper for me. Water is going up, and next year, the wages are going to go up. And so, I'm, I'm looking at a bunch of storefronts in San Andreas that are empty, and I'm just, I'm happy, and I see hope, but it just seems like, when I'm talking to people who are trying to renovate or, or do anything like that, they're like, the county's slow, they pushed it back, they did this, they did that. And so, that is really concerning for restaurants and stuff that are trying to go in, in Valley Springs, is one that I'm thinking of right now. People who are still trying to build their homes, and they're getting pushed back, and pushed back, and pushed back. It's taking something from seven to nine weeks for somebody to build a home right now, just to get the permit. And so, anyways, I just wanted to tell you thank you so much for what you're doing.
I would like to agree about the part, about, with the comment about marijuana being grown in homes. And in my comments on the draft EIR that was used to support the ban, one of my comments was that it would impact the county's available housing stock, but more really bedrooms and available rooms for actual human habitation, because your ordinance prohibits anyone from growing plants, even the six that they're supposed to be allowed to, and I believe the voters that voted for Prop 64, which I'm not one, by the way, I thought it was a terrible, or a terrible piece of legislation, that you require them to take up space that could have been taken up by people living. And this is in an environment when a few thousand people were displaced from their homes in D2 by the Butte Fire, and as Beth mentioned, and others, the requirements for building homes is becoming ridiculously onerous and prohibitive, in an environment where the county government is complaining about the lack of housing stock, and how it impacts your ability to hire people. I generally prefer an incentive approach to just about everything when you're trying to manage behavior than a punitive approach. I mean, even dog trainers know better than that. This is the last point I want to make here. It's escaped my mind, that's what happens when I come up here without notes. So, I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Vicki Ranky, Calaveras, Republican Party. And I just too, wanted to thank you for the work you're doing in our county. From your presentation, it looks like we're heading in the right direction. And thank you for your first step to go to the businesses that are already here and find out what's going on. And of course, the comments that were just all made, I think we found something we can all agree on, and that's we're over-regulated in this county, and we can't get anything done. So, hopefully, that's something you'll come across and be able to help figure out. Thank you.
I also just want to thank you for your presentation and the work you're doing. And I also believe that developing the economy in Calaveras is going to have a lot to do with promoting and advertising what we have here. The reason my wife and I moved to Calaveras County is, we didn't know much about this county at all, but we moved up here because my wife loves horses, and we had been to some horsemanship clinics in the county, and thought, and saw the rural environment's a good place to have horses. A lot of people probably don't know how many trails we have here. My wife is out several times a week, riding different trails, within just a few minutes of our home. And it, those type of things, if we promote that, will draw more people into our county. We have incredible equine places to ride, and not only that, but they're also available for hikers, on foot. Sometimes when we're riding, we see people that are hiking, and we need to let people know about that, let, let them know about our other resources. I know there are other times, I came to Calaveras County, I came up here camping one time, and I came to visit some of the caves, I didn't even know I was in Calaveras County. But after I moved here, I realized that these were places I had been coming and enjoying, and had those things be promoted more, I think would draw more people in. So, this is exciting, that we're going to be doing more of that. And I think all of us need to help get the word out, that there's a Facebook page, a website, and let people know, check it out, check out Calaveras County, it's a great place to come. Another thing that will help our economy also is, there tends to be a resistance to new businesses coming into some areas, because people are afraid of the competition. I know in Valley Springs, we have one grocery store now, unfortunately, because there's only one, there's not competition, so prices are high, and I hate to do it, but sometimes we have to go to Jackson to shop, because I can get twice as many groceries if I go to Jackson as I can shopping local. And there needs to be a challenge to our businesses, to try to be more in line with what people can get outside of the county, and we'll stay here. I know there's a gas station down in, and Wallace has changed ownership a number of times, and I used to hate it, because I'd drive by there when I was commuting, and I'd like to buy gas there, because it's close, be easy to stop there, but unfortunately, many times, I just drove as far as I could, because I could get gas for 10, 20 cents a gallon cheaper. You know, and our, our businesses here, if we could educate them, and they realize that they could become more competitive, people will make it a habit to stop at the businesses here and keep the money in the county. And we try as often as we can to do that, to spend And we try as often as we can to do that, to spend as much and keep as much in our county. But sometimes you just have to go outside because you can't afford to shop here. And those are other things that I think will help develop the economy in the county is to allow more businesses to come in because I was in retail and competition actually stimulates business. It doesn't hurt business. Thank you.
Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. Speaking of economic development and recycling, I have two suggestions to put some energy into or at least to put some thought into. A few years back, I proposed a project, which was, what I call it, was the poop factory, which would be a giant composting site somewhere in the county accessible where yard waste, manure, sewage, effluence could all be combined and dumped off and made into giant bags of compost. At the time, I suggested a tax on every property owner who would in return, $5 tax, in return would get a bag of compost, but it could be used to build the site where the compost factory was created. We know we've got plenty of sewage and manure, so that's something that we, a resource that is ongoing produced in our county. My second suggestion would be to induce Kmart to come to our county. We don't have a Walmart. Jackson had a Kmart and a Walmart right next to each other for 10, 15 years, and one of them had to go out of business. A Kmart in our county would attract some of the people that go out of county to do their purchasing. And if there was a site, I would imagine somewhere between San Andreas and Angels Camp that could be designated as a site for Kmart to build and create their own department store, I think it would be successful in our county. And to go back to the poop factory or the compost factory, I had a whole, in my mind, I had a whole advertising scheme already thought up. And it would be that all the supervisors would have bags of compost with their name on it that could be used to promote the factory as well as county government. It could be clever names like Michael's Manure or something like that, that the people in your district could access through their taxes, that bag of compost, and probably buy more, whether it's chipping or compost or yard waste. I think it's important to think that there are those resources we could use. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Any other board comments, questions? Kathy, you have some final?
The only thing I have to say is anybody that has questions, ideas, my door is always open. I'm in this building down at the end of the hall. I welcome your thoughts, your suggestions, and please bring me any ideas and thoughts.
Board, this is informational, so we don't need to act on any of it. And at this time, we're going to take lunch break. We're going to take lunch from 12:15 to 1...
45.
45? 1:45. So we're at lunch. All right, we're back from lunch. Madam Clerk, item number 21.
Item 21 is from the Economic Development Department. To adopt a resolution calling a special election and consolidating it with the November 6, 2018 statewide general election for the purpose of enabling the people of Calaveras County to approve or reject an ordinance amending Section 3.12.030 of the county code in order to raise the transient occupancy tax from 6% to 12% in order to provide approximately $600,000 annually for unrestricted general revenue purposes. Requires a four-fifths vote.
Ms. Galino.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Board of Supervisors. Kathy Galino, Economic Development. I am here today to bring forth this resolution and measure to go on the November ballot as directed by the board in a previous meeting. The TOT, we are currently at 6%, which is significantly behind our neighboring counties that are at 10 and at 12% in some cases. This would provide revenue of an additional $600,000 to our county. And I am here to have discussion and take direction.
Any board members have questions? Supervisor Mills.
Thank you, Kathy. I just mentioned on page, packet page 231 where the actual measure is, it says in parentheses, "Paid only by hotel motel short-term rental guests." But if we go to the amended ordinance on the next page, 3.12.030, it only speaks of hotels.
That is correct. I've asked Sarah Dekay from County Council to look at that. It was just brought forward.
Okay. It might be something we just need to amend.
Hi, yes, that's certainly something. You'll see the second version of the ordinance that was attached to this item, the red line version. You can see the changes that were made between the prior, the existing ordinance and those that would be made if this were put into place. And you're right, that's not something that we changed, but that's certainly, because the current ordinance does just say hotel, but that's something that we could, at the board's direction, amend that ordinance, that proposed ordinance.
Ms. Dekay, it's not necessary to do it now because should this ballot measure pass, that's when we would amend the ordinance. So it isn't critical to do it now.
Well, no, the voters will be asked a question and then the ordinance will change if it passes. And so that's something that we would want to know now, what it would be changing to if that were enacted by the voters.
Okay. I just would ask that that be included in the discussion. Thank you.
Supervisor Olivera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you explain on the amended order, the red line information, which, and I'm not going to quote the whole section there, "Revenue generated by this tax shall be used for unrestricted general revenue purposes to maintain or improve essential county services and infrastructures, including, but not limited to, sheriff's patrol, emergency fire response and protection, road and pothole repairs, traffic flow, and safety improvements, attracting and retaining businesses, and reinvesting in economic development." I'm a little confused. I thought in our discussions that this was going to be for, to be restricted revenue for those purposes of public safety, road repair, infrastructure, police, fire prevention, fire services, and economic development, or I take that back, through the Visitors' And now it reads unrestricted. Can you explain how we're going to adjust that?
That is correct. It is a general tax. In doing the survey that was presented by the survey company, it was recommended that we go that route. However, our agreements for use of that tax can still go forward as they are now, which is, you know, it's something that certainly could be considered. And the CAO, Mr. Lutz, and I just had this conversation, so. But it is a general tax. It requires a 50% plus one as such, and that was how it was drafted.
The current TOT tax, the 6% we collect, is general funds. Every year, we distribute it out. It's not, so it's just going forward with from 6 to 12, the way it's currently collected.
The point being is if it goes to a specific tax, we need that two-thirds. That's where the rub is.
Correct. So if it's a special tax, then it requires two-thirds or 66%.
Right.
So that was, and that was one of the discussion points, is that certainly the board today can say, you know what, we want it to be special. It can be amended to reflect that language, but we would have to meet the, that two-thirds threshold. And the only way that it then could be changed is through an act of the voters as opposed to board policy. We have historically funded those organizations. Obviously, the plan is to continue to fund those organizations, the Visitors' Bureau, Public Works, the sheriff, and now the fire districts. But based on the polling and knowing that, one, the polling company felt comfortable that a general tax would prevail, and two, it was going to be fairly close to ask for that two-thirds threshold on a special tax. Staff's recommendation and based on the prior discussion at the board was to come back with a general tax.
Historically, with the thought tax situation in Calaveras County, I seem to recall some information back before I took office that a clause like that caused some very significant division of those funds. That's why I was under the impression, and I understand the poll, and I understand that they've done a good job, but I think we're kind of, when we started this program, we wanted to have designated funds for those four categories. My question is, do we take the risk or do we go with our poll advice? I'm not confident in fact that we should open that up to other areas. We've talked about these four areas for the last six months. For discussion, folks?
And I think that is an excellent point, Supervisor. I think that's the, probably a piece that the board will absolutely have to deliberate on and provide guidance to staff if they would like that changed. At this point, our recommendation was a general tax.
Any other board comments? If not, hold in the public comments. Any public comments on this item?
Okay. I didn't get in front of anybody.
You're good.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. I think I'm the only taxpayer representative, representing the taxpayers that are going to be taxed by this. There's nobody else here representing the people that come to our county and enjoy our motels and short-term rentals. So I'm it. We have a case of taxation without representation. This is not free money. It's not free money. If you, if you tax people that come to our county $600,000, that's $600,000 they don't have to spend to buy worms or dinners or pizza or something else. It's not, it's not like it's free money. It's not free. So then it's another thing, when you double the tax, it potentially could have a reduction in the number of visitors. And if that reduction were like 6%, where are you then? Right back where you are now with the same income and with less, you know, less people. We have a history of incredibly good work by our, our Visitors' Bureau operating on 6%. I think we're better than other counties that charge two times as much, maybe three times as much. We've got really good Visitors' Bureau and we make good use of that 6%. What is the reason for doubling it? Is it to pay for things that visitors do, like they die here and we have to take care of their bodies? What is the reason for raising that 6% to go in the general fund? We're doing things with transient occupancy taxes, which is, ties into another law we passed, which is the Lake Tullock short-term rentals. We don't have information what's been happening there. How about permits, income? What is the extent of non-compliance there? How much black market is, was created because of the regulations that were put in Lake Tullock? I don't have any information about what's happening there. As far as we know, the market may be depressed because of the regulations that went in there. But that ties into the TOT as well because we'll charge those people TOT. Thank you.
Bonnie Newman, Double Springs. If we were to increase from 6 to 12%, we would have to lose half of the people that come to the county to be back where we started from, not 6% of the people. We'd have to lose exactly half of the people that come here to spend their money at hotels and motels. So if we only lost 12, 6% or 12% of our visitors, we'd still end up hundreds of thousands of dollars ahead. And my question has to do with how that money is to be spent. We've been hearing that the visitor center is doing an excellent job with what they have. I don't think increased visitors are going to impact the visitor center. What I do know that they would impact is the roads, potholes, road repair, sheriff's office responses to, you know, the camping grounds, et cetera, bars. Perhaps it would impact the hospitals, people from other areas having accidents in our county, and the sheriff, the fire districts, if there were to be fires because of people coming to our county. So although you can't designate the money in a specific area, if you're doing it with the general thing, you could, by agreement, have those as priorities without having to have your two-thirds vote. So if there was an understanding that the money that's collected were to go to whatever categories you designate beforehand, well, as a committee, you could make that decision. But if we get new board members, they may not want to go along with that. But that would be a consideration for, for y'all to make. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Beth Whitkey, D5. So during a town hall earlier this year at the Vet Center, there was talk about the TOT and I'm just wondering how it impacts for disaster evacuations because it's being marketed as something that just people that come here to visit have to pay. But if you're forced into a hotel because of a wildfire or some other disaster, do you have to pay the temporary occupancy tax? That's my question.
No, I appreciate Al and I agree with him a lot on defending taxpayers, but I also believe in a fair tax. And I think the TOT tax is a fair tax. When we plan our vacation, we're planning a vacation in the fall. We booked our room in Fort Bragg, and I didn't once ask them how much their TOT tax was. What I looked at is where the room was, what it was close to, what I wanted to visit, could I afford it? I had choices and I picked what I could afford and I got, you know, what I wanted the most. And when I go there, I'm not going to say...
I'm not going to say, oh, I paid 12 percent TOT tax, so I think I'm going to eat less or visit less the things I went to go see. I don't really think anybody thinks that way. I think there's a tax that's kind of, I think it's fair, because it does, people come into our county to vacation. They do put a certain burden upon our infrastructure and our services here, and we're just having them pay a percentage of that. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think this is a very fair tax. And I would be in favor of leaving it the way it is unrestricted. I think we have a better chance of passing it at 51, 50-plus-one. I think then it's up to the Board to see how those, that money is used and going to the services it needs to go to. But again, it's a very fair tax, like sales taxes to me are also a fair tax, because the more money you have, the more you spend, the more tax you, you spend, the less money you have, the less you buy, the less tax you spend. And it's equal among everybody. It's an equal tax. And what we have now is not equal. Other counties are charging us 12 percent when we go there to visit, 10 or 12 percent, and we're only charging 6 percent. All we're trying to do is, is come up to the level that we're paying when we go other places to visit. So I would be in favor of you pushing this forward onto the ballot. Thank you.
It's hard to figure out what the sweet number is and how to get the most out of this situation. I'm not particularly for or against the TOT, but I do know that there is a formula about the amount of business you have versus how much you charge for that business. And if you have more business, you make more money. And if the people can't afford the other side of it, where you have a higher tax, then those people may or may not come back. But if the people that have, make a higher volume, and they decide to come back because they could afford to have fun here, and enjoy themselves, and relax away from the valley, or the big city, or whatever, that it can make a difference. I don't know what the right thing to do is. But I do know that in, at Comanche, I've been there when there was as many as 45,000 people years ago. And I would say that's a high volume, and probably too high. Now, when you go down there, even on a Fourth of July, you will not see cars waiting to get in all the way down to Patterson, Comanche Parkway T. You will see a line of cars within eyesight. And I don't know what the difference is or the answer to it, but I think that in business, if you have repeat business, it is much easier than drumming up business. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Last year, when I traveled to Nevada, I went to the Grand Canyon, multiple other places, and the rooms over in that area, when you're going through Vegas and everything, tend to be considerably higher than what we pay here generally. At no time did I look at the taxes when it came, came to it. And we, when we decided to go on that trip, we had planned ahead and made sure we had enough to get that extra sandwich. My concerns fall in line with Mr. Olivares and the fact that we are presenting to the people a vote, and we're saying, look, our intention is to use this money for these things. And you know what? That intention may be genuine right now. But when you bring up the fact that three, four years down the road, that people, people move on with life, other people are sitting in seats, other people may have different intentions for that money, no matter what the Board at the time had intentions for that money. So that could change. I understand that the hurdle of 66 percent, or two-thirds vote, is more than 50-plus-one percent, but I think that you will pull more support, and more people will feel more comfortable voting on a tax that they know where it's going, because people are concerned about their fire services. They are concerned about the potholes in the road, and the impact that, you know, additional people coming into our county do have on that, at the same time as our everyday driving for the people that we live here and have, that are paying our taxes and everything. So I personally would be in favor of a 66 percent vote, and the fact that I would like to see the security in that money going to where it's intended to go in the future, because we can't always trust who might be sitting behind that, behind there later in the future. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comments. Bring them back to the Board. Board questions, comments? Kathy, excuse me, Supervisor Mills?
I can tell you that the short-term vacation rentals on Lake Tullock are doing well. And so the Airbnb has been a dramatic improvement into our system. I know that rentals overall are up over last year. So, yes, we are getting that activity. I would like, though, to be sure that in 3.12030, where the word hotel is used, that we be sure that we included motels and short-term rentals in that. Maybe this is part of what we do today?
Yeah, just to speak to that, Supervisor Mills, the, in the definition, so 3.12.030 is the only section of our code which would be amended by this ballot measure. And you're correct, it only says hotel. However, I believe it's the section immediately preceding, .020, it defines...
I don't have it in front of me.
No, and I didn't, when I was up here before either. So I, and it's, it's not being changed via this ballot measure, so it's not part of this packet. But it has definitions, and its definition of hotel is broad enough such that it encompasses motels, bed-and-breakfast, short-term rentals as well. Now, if, if, you know, the Board felt as though they wanted to amend those definitions at any point via, you know, a new ordinance, you certainly could. But it does, any structure, or portion of a structure intended or designed for occupancy by transients for dwelling, lodging, or sleeping purposes, including any hotel in tourist home or house, motel, studio hotel. So it does, it does have a fairly broad extensive definition.
With that broad definition, then, is it required under the actual ballot measure that we're putting out to actually, to include those additional pieces, or should just the definition by itself stand on its own?
The definite, the section of the code with the definitions is not being changed by this ballot measure. You know, I think that it's...
But we're defining in the ballot measure what those are.
In the ballot measure, it is pointing out to the voters that that would include hotels, motels, and short-term rentals. I believe that's consistent with the definition that's currently in the code and would not be changed by this measure.
I just want to be sure that we're not...
Yeah, no, and it's a really good question. But I, but I do think that that, the definition of hotel in our code already encompasses all of those things which are referenced in the ballot question.
And just to add, Supervisor Mills, I do believe that the ordinance itself that is being modified does not, it references hotel. And so the definition of hotel is what would be operative in interpreting the updated code section. And so we would be looking at the definition of hotel within our code. And as Ms. DeKay indicated, our definition of hotel is very broad. It does include things such as anything that is meant for dwelling, lodging, or sleeping purposes. And that includes hotels in tourist homes or house, motel, studio hotel, bachelor hotel, lodging house, rooming house, apartment house, dormitory, public or private club, mobile home or house trailer at a fixed location. So I think that based on our current code definition for hotel, that that would include and encompass short-term rentals.
I don't know if we just opened something up here, but for those people who want to rent out their house trailer for a week, or a month, or whatever, are they going to fall under this?
They already do.
Wow, okay.
Supervisor Garamendi?
So, that was very helpful. Thank you very much. I leave, because I thought Dennis was on to something there, and sounds like, but so if we ever, you know, 10 years ago when this went through, or whatever, 12 years when this went through, we didn't know anything about Airbnb. They didn't exist. So if new things come up in the future, we could amend the ordinance before this as far as defining what a hotel is. So if there's a spaceport here, and whatever might come up that we can't foresee, we would just amend our definition, not have to change this ordinance, correct?
Correct.
We don't have to go to voters to do that.
Correct. Because this is just purely setting the percentage. The, the tax itself has already been implemented. This is just modifying, going to the people to ask whether you want to increase the tax percentage, and whether it is a general tax or a special tax, as far as where the money or the tax money goes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Clapp, your lights on?
Well, I think, Megan, when I answered it, I was interested in the campgrounds like in Comanche, and the different campgrounds we have. I believe Comanche gets 45,000 camp days, you know, a year out there. So does that include camp, campgrounds?
I think, County Council?
I can actually answer that.
Kathy?
Yeah. So there are campgrounds that are, that are captured in the TOT. Not every campground. I believe the state and federal-run campgrounds are not participating, so the private campgrounds are.
Any other Board questions?
Board Chair, and just so the Board is also aware, because this came up during public comment, the definition of transient that is already in our code that is not being updated by this ordinance, just so everyone is aware, the definition of transient is essentially someone who is staying somewhere for less than 30 days. So anything less than 30 days is considered a transient for transient occupancy purposes. If you stay in excess of 30 days, once you hit that 30-day threshold, anything beyond that 30 days is no longer, you're no longer considered a transient.
I just have one question, and I don't want to get us off on a sidebar here, but the federal and state campgrounds, obviously, we've got a lot of them, and we don't get to charge. Can you unpack that a little bit? And is there room for negotiation with the state or feds? They do benefit from our roads and services.
Very good question.
I can explain.
You got that one?
Yes.
Dennis?
Tiger. In other words, because we have the access to the federal forests or the state forests, there is funds that is, that come to us directly through, for instance, the Tiger Program, that give us money. And Highway 4, we already have got some of that money in as a result of that. And we're, we're renewing that every year. So...
Is there, is there, is there an opportunity to go get more?
That's the question that would have to be asked.
I don't know. I would, I don't want, it's not what we're talking about here, but it would be something economic development may want to take a look at.
If, if I could add, it is law that state and federal would not charge TOT. The question would be going to those areas like one of the large reservoirs, and trying instead to work out some type of an agreement similar to what we do with Lake Patrol, or things like that, to provide an MOU, or some type of a funding mechanism for services like fire, like police, et cetera.
Where this speaks to is basically Lake Tullock. Well, you could, I mean, you were successful in negotiating out with Airbnb. Maybe you could figure something out. I don't, this isn't part of this discussion, but it'd be interesting in the future.
And Comanche, Pardee has a lot of campsites also.
Sure. Pardee, Big Meadow, all the way up there.
And they're not state or federal?
No, they're not. They're private.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, but those facilities have contracts with the Sheriff's Department, and I know that's just one entity we're talking about, to provide those police services. As a matter of fact, the National Forest has a contract with our Sheriff's Department to provide police services for enforcing state laws. So that, that's probably another revenue stream, if you will, that might assist us in what we want to do. Do we double charge them? It's taxpayer dollars, Al. Just to bring that question up.
Yeah, it's a good point. But I think the only reservoir that we have where we have no MOU, we have no income stream, is Lake Tullock. For the fire department, for the Sheriff's Patrol, and we do a lot of patrol out there when they get as many as 180 boats on that lake. So, yeah, I think it's time that we, we start to have those discussions.
Supervisor Mills?
Thank you.
I've talked to Tim, because we have Hogans in my district, and they use the excuse that Cal Fire provides them their fire service, but yet, we had two medical calls out there that our fire department had to respond to those, and they got paid nothing for it. So I know I've been talking to Tim about getting something with them, and I think it's just us approaching them. I think we never have brought it to their attention. And I think they would, if they realized that we're providing service for them, they weren't paying, I think they would just, you know, step up and do it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
A motion by Supervisor Garamendi?
Question on the motion. Are we approving the first draft as written, or the second draft as presented with redlined?
Through the same document. One is a clean version, and one is a redlined version.
Okay. I, I'm still of the opinion that this should be designated funds. It's presented that way, and let the folks vote on this. The vote will indicate whether or not the public wants this. If it's 66 percent, then that tells us overwhelmingly. But once again, we, we presented this program to the public for those four areas. And I don't want to see what happened in the past where a different Board, with different Board members, started chipping away and carving out things off of this fund. I, I think that's a bait and switch in some circumstances, and I don't, I don't feel comfortable doing that as a Board member. So I would be of the position to either not support as written, or else modify to go back for designated funds.
We have a motion on the floor in a second.
I understand.
And a second for it.
Could I, could I address?
Sure.
Mike, when we came forward, it used to be split three ways. In this Board right here, because we had a chance of doing it, because our fire department was responding to injuries, to fires, to drownings, to everything, and they were getting absolutely nothing. But then us as a Board saying, hey, this is not right. We need to really start paying the people that's providing the service. And if, and if it was designated where we couldn't do it, we couldn't have done that. And I think the Board acted responsibly by putting the fire department in there where they're actually part of it, because we didn't take it for anything else, but we're just trying to use it for the people that's providing the service to the, and, and I thought, I think we acted responsible by doing that.
I don't have a problem with that, Supervisor Clapp. I was part of that agreement. I fully understand that. That's why I'm adamant about making sure that what we told the public in our discussions was for public safety, including law enforcement and fire department, infrastructure on road repair, and the Visitors Bureau. Now, we're looking at, because we may lose this in a vote versus 66 percent versus 50-plus-one, and we're, I'm just, I don't want to relive history. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, we'll have a motion in a second. So I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes 4-1. Moving on to item number 22. Madam Clerk?
Item 22 is from the Administrative Office to make a finding of public benefit and approve and authorize the Board Chair to execute Amendment 1 to the Black Bart Playhouse lease, extending the lease term through June 30, 2019, with an annual lease amount of $1.
C.A.O. Lux?
Yes, thank you. Yep. My office is bringing this item forward. One, you'll notice that this is for a one-year lease term. It's important... It's important to note that we're just asking for the one-year lease term because we have identified with the theater itself a number of maintenance issues that long-term are going to have to be addressed. We're in negotiations with the Black Bart Theater Company, the group, on what those repairs might look like, who would be responsible, those types of details. However, given that the current lease agreement was up, or in fact was up in the beginning of June, we needed to get something forward to at least continue with the current arrangement, hence why this is a year-long lease as opposed to a longer term. Just a little bit of history, because I recognize this is the first time that this item has come before this board. Originally, the agreements on this date back to nineteen eighty-two, where this site used to be a county road yard. And at that point then, an agreement was entered into with the then-play group to have a metal building there that was remodeled at that playgroup's expense in the mid-eighties to be the theater that it is today. Subsequent to that, there was a ante-room added for costume changes, et cetera. The important things to note on all of those, the building remodel, the upgrades, developing that theater, none of it was actually paid for with county dollars, it was paid for through that theater group. And I think that's an important consideration when looking at where the public benefit finding request is here. It's also important to note there's an adjacent parking lot to the theater. This agreement does not include the parking lot. The parking lot will continue to remain as it has been, which is used for Murphy's, the general parking, that was paid for with Park and Ride funds, again, some years ago. The use of the building as stipulated continues to be theater, weddings, birthday, memorial services, other recreational purposes for general public use, not for private benefit, and that is stipulated within the lease, that any fees charged are for cleaning, upkeep of the building, it can't be used for private benefit. Again, consistent with our request for the public benefit finding and awarding a lease that is below market value. That's the extent of my presentation. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions?
Tim, what do you see as the long range here? Let's say the three to five.
Long range, and I, you know, again, there's a lot of pieces that have to be looked at into this. The theater in the past has been supported by the theater group being able to do these renovations. I know they've gotten some donations and grant funds. I think we can come up with an option that long-term is going to be paid for, you know, not through county dollars, that would be obviously my first goal and our priority. But that also takes a little more time to know that funding's in place, there's a plan, and that's part of where, probably started discussions with them back in December when Patrick Martin and I went and toured the facility and identified where the problems were. But then the next phase is what the plan is, what does this look like long-term? So I'm confident that we can come back with a recommendation to the board that will not involve extensive, if any, county funds. Historically, that's how we've been able to fund cleanup or remodels of this building, and I'm confident we can continue down that path.
Supervisor Olivera?
Yeah, I would agree with Supervisor, I'm sorry, C.A.O. Lux, but I want to point out in the lease agreement that we are extending for one year, that the county has no financial obligation for the development, improvement, operation, or maintenance of the theater. That's kind of an open-ended question. They have no obligation, although they can, at a board decision, modify that obligation, correct?
Certainly, as a county property, the board could make the decision that yes, we would put county funds into remodeling it, but at this point, that has not been in any plans that have been presented or approved by the board.
Thank you.
Public comments?
My question is, on an annual basis, how much money is generated from charging the people or the organizations to use the building, and what are the fees? How much do the fees run?
Do you want me to answer now? Sorry. Actually, I think that's a good question. When I was rummaging through the file, because, again, trying to bring myself up to speed on this, I did find prior years where we've gotten financial summaries. We have not received one at this point, but that is something that we're asking for, but I just don't have it here today.
What was, when you saw them, what were they then?
You know, I have to go back and look, but I know historically it's been in the red in terms of the cost of utilities, the cost of general upkeep certainly has been subsidized just by the theater group and the nonprofit.
And the theater groups, I assume they're charging admission to see their plays? If they're having a wedding there, I'm sure there's a charge, you know, or maybe it's by the number of people that attend. Are there restrooms in this facility? Is there a kitchen in this facility? And what happens if there is a big repair? Does that mean we come, they need to come back here to ask for, the foundation is falling apart, or something like that? And I think that's about it. It has to do with money, my questions. And if they're renting it from us, or from you all, from Calaveras, for a dollar a year, and they're charging people to use their facility, it would be important to know how much money's coming in and to make sure that money's being spent back into the facility or to pay the janitor or for any repairs. I think that's real important to know.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. You want to answer any of those questions?
An answer to those latter parts, one, I'll try and remember all the ones that there were. They do offer it, again, for weddings, for memorial services. There is a nominal fee that is charged, that is an established fee schedule, that really is designed to cover utility costs, cleanup, not to generate a profit for the group. There are restrooms. I don't recall if there's a kitchen at the facilities, but I do know that there are definitely restrooms. And in terms of big repairs, those are part of the challenges that I think they're facing right now. We know the roof and the HVAC system are both at end-of-life, and so those are both pretty extensive upgrades that do require planning, and that's what we're in negotiations with, the model.
I performed in this building, and they charge a nominal fee, and they have theater equipment, they have sound equipment, they have a stage, curtains, and seating. They maintain all of that through the nominal charges that they ask for. I'm sure they're in the red quite often because they have to pay for the utilities also. They generate their funds through donations primarily, or through grant funding when they need something done major to the building for their use. But they have, they have lighting, there's an up balcony where they use, they stage their lighting and so forth, and they have an area for their sound equipment operator, and all that equipment stuff is being maintained by them. So, and there is not a kitchen, there's a little sink area placed there, there's a little area out in front where people come in and gather before they go in. Sometimes they serve refreshments there, but no. But there is restrooms there, so.
Non nominal fee?
Yeah. I think it was like, well, I don't know about that, when they charge it out for venue for weddings or so, but when I was performing there, it was even a charge, it was they were asking for a five-dollar donation when you came in. So it really, really wasn't a charge, it was, here's donation, five dollars or so.
And in terms of the events, I believe a hundred dollars was, I think it was based on length of time for the event, but I think it was a hundred, and there was a hundred and fifty-dollar, again, nominal fees for covering some of the utility costs and cleanup.
All right. Any other board questions? If not, I'll open for a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Supervisor Clapp. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Supervisor Olivera. Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five-zero.
Gary, I thought you almost jinxed it when you said you acted, were in the place there, I was worried about that.
Might have shut it down, huh? Madam Clerk, item number twenty-three, I believe this is yours, is it not?
It is. Item twenty-three is from the Board of Supervisors to receive a report of the Clerk's review of the citizen boards, committees, and commissions to adopt a resolution disbanding the Calaveras Parks and Recreation Commission, to rescind Resolution zero-nine dash zero-three-five, which established procedures for appointing commissioners to the Calaveras Parks and Recreation, and to approve the adopted bylaws of the Fishing Game Commission and the Library Commission. So as a part of the annual review that you instructed me to do, included in the agenda item, there are several groups that I reviewed. The first was Children and Families First, which is first five Calaveras. This commission was originally established in nineteen ninety-eight, and it was created for the purposes of promoting and supporting and improving the early development of children from birth to five. Their nine-member commission meets regularly, complies with the Brown Act, and has established bylaws. Their terms are three years in length, and members may be appointed for an unlimited amount of terms. I don't recommend that any changes be made to this group. The next is the Mental Health Board. It was mandated by Section five-six-oh-four dot two-A of the California Welfare and Institutions Code, and among other things, was established to review and evaluate the community's behavioral health services, facilities, and special programs, and shall report any significant findings to the Behavioral Health Services staff, participate in resolution discussions, and reinforce department successes as appropriate. Their twelve-member board meets regularly, complies with the Brown Act, and also has established bylaws. Their terms are three years in length, and members may be appointed for an unlimited amount of terms. I don't recommend that any change be made to this group as they're functioning well. The next is the Prevent Child Abuse Council. This was established by the Board of Supervisors in nineteen eighty-five by Resolution eighty-five dash two-four-zero to administer AB two-nine-nine-four children's trust fund monies to raise awareness related to the prevention of child abuse and neglect. This nine-member council meets regularly, also complies with the Brown Act, and has established bylaws. Their terms are two years in length, and members may be appointed for an unlimited amount of terms. I don't recommend any change to this group. The Parks and Recreation Commission was established by the Board of Supervisors in two thousand and seven by Resolution oh-seven dash zero-eight-three to advise the board on all matters pertaining to parks and recreational opportunities within Calaveras County. At that time, the group was also advised the board regarding the distribution of Proposition Forty funds that had been allocated to the county to benefit parks within the community. Those monies have been expended and are no longer being received. This seven-member commission has struggled over the past few years to maintain membership and advise the Board of Supervisors as originally intended. For the past six months, they have only had one member who does also recommend that this group be disbanded. It has resulted in an inability for them to hold meetings, comply with the Brown Act, or establish bylaws. Based on these findings, it's the Clerk's recommendation that the group be disbanded. The last two items are the approval of bylaws for the Fishing Game Commission and the Library Commission. The Fishing Game Commission currently has ten members, two appointed from each supervisory district, with terms of one year each. They often struggle to maintain a quorum for meetings, and has approved a recommendation to the Board of Supervisor changing their membership when their terms expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. This will come to the board as an ordinance to be introduced in September of this year, so that it will coincide with when the adoption, if it's adopted, the process would not cut short anybody's term, that they would still be in effect until the end of the year. The group does not meet in November and December, so that's why we're targeting September. They did approve the Board of Supervisors' bylaws template for the committees and commissions, and so their bylaws are before you for approval so that they can go into effect. The Library Commission has seven members at large with staggered terms of four years each. The group meets regularly, complies with the Brown Act, and has recently adopted bylaws. So the Clerk's recommendation is to approve the bylaws for both of these groups.
Any board questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
We'll be voting on the agenda item as a whole, or we'll be bifurcated on each individual item mentioned by the board clerk.
Well, I think we can vote them on as a whole unless you want to pull a certain item out of it for discussion, or otherwise, if we have a motion to accept, we can go down that road also.
Thank you.
Supervisor Garimendi?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull the item on, first off, I'd like to thank the Madam Clerk of the board for doing all this work. I serve on half of these committees that she's reviewed, and it was a tremendous amount of work, and while a very simple document in front of us, there's a lot of legwork to put this together. Thank you very much, Dan.
You're welcome.
But I would like to pull the Park and Recreation Commission apart. I spoke to the Clerk about this, and there's no two ways, this thing hasn't been functioning well. That said, it was formed, it was formed for Proposition Forty funds to figure out how the county was going to distribute it.
That's great.
And you voted on this in your first term, Gary?
No, it was before that, but I was involved in Prop Forty and knew the history of why it was formed.
So we have, in June, we just passed Proposition Sixty-eight, the state of California, and this is the first parks bond that's been passed since two thousand and six. It's a four-point-one-billion-dollar bond, there's nine-hundred million for neighborhood parks, there's four-hundred-and-twenty-five million on a cap basis for new parks creation, there's five million to help the counties run campaigns to put in for park bonds, there's one-hundred-and-ten million for nonprofits for youth parks, there's forty-five million for trails and greenways, forty million for local government projects, and every county is guaranteed four-hundred-thousand dollars for parks projects. And they're primarily focused on disadvantaged communities, which most of Calaveras is. The guidelines for how they're going to distribute this money have not been determined yet. It'll go out to the agencies, they'll make rules, there'll be a series of hearings over the next several months, and then they'll determine how they're going to grant out these dollars. As a result of that, in relation to that, I think that we'd be making a mistake to disband the commission at this point because we may need it in three or four months down the road. We may need it when they make the rules, they may want a county organization to endorse things, we don't really know yet. And so while there's no doubt about the way it's functioning today, we may, if we disband it, we may be back here in the next quarter reforming it. And so it just seems like, I would suggest that we pull this, we wait, we should probably, as supervisors, all figure out ways to put people on this commission, see how we need it, but also let's, I'd like to discuss directing staff to keep a very close eye on this rulemaking so we could be well-positioned to take advantage of this. There'll be a lot of work going on up in Big Trees, there's a state parks bond in there. There's an opportunity here that we just don't see yet, and I'd hate to throw this out and then have to restart it if we need it in the future. Would be my recommendation, so. Would be my recommendation, so I'd like.
That's up for discussion. Supervisor Mills?
Well, I appreciate the conversation. I was the CCWD representative because they have parks, or a park. San Andreas also has had a representative. But it's difficult to get people to participate, and without them being aware of the funding availability and what they can do, I think that by itself is kind of a downer for people to want to get involved when they really don't feel that there's anything there. There are a lot of other opportunities for parks in this community, and I know Murphy's has done a great job with Feeny Park and the other parks that they have there. And parks are an integral part of whether or not you're going to have a hotel or motel situated in your town. I don't know if you really realize the correlation, but it's important. So if we know that in the next six months, that the state is actually going to start releasing those funds and start being able to have us do something with it, shutting it down now, starting it back up is kind of a redundant act. But at the same time, I think there needs to be a clear purpose and goal, and what do we want them to accomplish and why are they there? Maybe it's an opportunity in this next six months to go back and review the terms and conditions that they're operating under, not so much their bylaws, because we're going to have to reset their bylaws anyway. But.
I agree, there's an opportunity here that is kind of nebulous, but I think it'll come to be formed, and certainly when they decide how they're going to release these monies, I think we'll have a lot more public interest because there's going to be some meat on the bone, assuming that this is the right organization to do that, and we just don't know. So maybe, it may not be, but I don't know if our timing's right to just throw it out today.
Any other board discussion, comment? Not open up the public comment?
Ben Stoppa, District 5. I want to thank Jack for bringing up those future funds coming down the pike, that's something that definitely need to be brought up. And Dennis is correct, it is a major part of bringing new hotel and motel businesses here, which would actually help with your TOT tax more in the future. But this isn't just stopped there. These park funds don't just benefit children. There's dog parks, equestrian centers, trails, as we're brought up, and these actually bring up the values in the communities that they're installed in. So when we're talking about areas like Copperopolis, or Rancho Calaveras, or Valley Springs as a whole, we put these parks in there, and that actually brings in the type of family-oriented, even retiree-type people that we want inside our communities because they see value, things to do in their own community where they don't have to go far, that are healthy for them all. So it's a good thing to consider. I think it's a good idea that Jack brought up tabling this till the future. It'll be the same thing as it was in the past, it'll pretty much sit in stasis until it gets to the point where we have more than one person on that commission. They did meet in the past, but it was always, I've talked to a few people that have been on the Parks and Recreation Committee over the years, and it was always hard for them to get a quorum going together. And it's basically because the money had ran out. So where's the point of them getting together when you're going to just talk about, you know, we would love to do this, but if there's no grants or other types of revenue, and the Board of Supervisors aren't supporting them through, let's say, the general fund, then you aren't going to have your interest. So this could provide the interest in the future for it. Thank you.
On the front page of the Stockton Record, one of the articles is "How Can San Joaquin Boost Its Parks?" They are cutting the funding to their parks in San Joaquin right now. They're only going to give them $5.3 million this year to develop and protect and clean up what they have already set aside, which amounts to 3/10ths of 1% of the county's spending. So other counties have seen fit to fund this kind of an entity, and I see this committee suffering the same kind of fate that the IHSS committee has suffered. There are seven people on this commission, and there's supposed to be one from each district, one from CCWD, and one from somewhere else, I'm not quite sure. So what has your involvement been in recruiting people for this commission, for this committee? Have you reached out to your constituents to find who is available, who has interest? Whenever I see a commission or a committee being downgraded or extinguished, I always have to think of, what have you, the five gentlemen, done to recruit people to sit on these committees? So I look at their failure as your failure to recruit these people in their important position. And if there is going to be money made available very soon, we would be cutting off our nose to spite our face just in order to cut somebody's workload a little bit, or whatever the problem seems to be. If the community were made aware that tourism is a part of our budget, our funding, and having adequate parks and facilities available is an attraction for people coming to our community, I think that's an important part, point to make. Also, just as a resource for the people that already live here, there's nothing wrong with another park somewhere that has not been developed yet. All we need to know is who's going to be donating the area, because there's a lot of very generous people in this county, what funds might be able to use, or what this committee might do to do fundraising, to pay for some of the expenses. So there's a lot of responsibilities to this committee, and I hope you don't eliminate it because I think it will be helpful in the future. And don't cut off your nose to spite your face. Thank you.
So I'd be interested in serving on the Parks and Rec Committee, and I'd be interested in doing outreach to my community. I have a question. There's already, the one person on the committee is from D5. Can I, since I have property in D2, sit in D2 chair, or do you have to be where you're registered to vote? Because I have properties in both districts. So I'm happy to do outreach. Tried today to get someone else to put in a application. So far, I've gotten no takers, but I can keep trying. That's my comment.
You can go online and fill out the application, or you just go in and see Diane, fill out the proper application?
She already gave me one.
She already gave you one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. And I believe it has to be your primary residence.
Okay.
Usually.
Okay.
And so then my other question is, does it have to be, I mean, does it always have to be that way on commissions? Or if you're short people, does it always have to be spread out throughout the county? Or can you have more than one representative on the commission?
It depends on how it was set up, and I don't have that in front of me right now as to how it was, but generally, most of these committees are by district. There are a few that are countywide. I think this particular one has to do with districts.
Okay.
Because of how it was set up and the reason it was set up. And again, Prop 40 back in 2006 was similar to what Jack was talking about here, where the state gave funds to the counties for park and recreations, and you had to have a commission set up to expend those funds, and that's why it was set up to begin with. It was carried on past that, and I can understand, because of how and why it was set up, it got to where it is now because it was set up to spend those funds. Once those funds were gone, you know, there was very little for them to do. They did a very good job. There was a driving person on there by the name of Pat McGreevy, really worked very hard to make sure those funds went to each district, and he did a very good job. And there was a lot of other people that did, I don't want to single him out, but I think he was the chair of it, but there was a lot of other people that did very good work for that, when it was up and running very well.
So if it's about dispersing funds, then it needs to state each district needs a representative? Or is there a way to change it? If you're unable to recruit from all five districts, is it possible to make this a countywide commission so that people can serve?
I'll have County Council do that.
It's dependent on the way that the language of the resolution creating the entity is, and just so the Board knows, the resolution, it's 07-083, and it's attached to your Board packet at page 261. And in that, it sets out the membership for this commission shall consist of seven members as follows. One appointed by each county supervisor from within his or her supervisory district; one appointed by the Board of Directors of CCWD; one appointed by the directors of the San Andreas Recreation and Parks District; and then ex officio members shall be as follows: the county administrative officer or his or her designee; the City of Angels' administrator or his or her designee; the community development director or his or her designee; and county council or his or her designee.
And that was set up because of Prop 40 funding, and I don't know if that's going to be a requirement on any of the bond funds coming forward. We can certainly, when those come forward, if there's things attached to it, we can revisit to make this, to conform to what the state is requesting us to do when those funds become available.
Okay, thank you.
But this was set up for that, Prop 40, that was the requirement for it.
And also, just to note, Board Chair, the next section, Section 2 within this resolution is on eligibility, and it says, "Any registered voter and resident of Calaveras County will be eligible. Applications for vacancies will be solicited and accepted." Thank you.
Okay.
I think that you should keep it because the parks and recreation areas that are here in Calaveras County have been, they're here because of a lot of sacrifice from the people that work to get them. An unbelievable amount of money to redo it would be unthought of. And so for young people, for old people, for any people, nature is a way to recharge, and parks are what that's about. They're also about good sportsmanship, and trying to win, but being a good sport if you didn't. And so they're invaluable, and I hope that you'll keep it at least on the back burner because of these things I've said. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
House of Congress Taxpayer Association. We may have a lot of good things going on in this county that don't involve county government or the taxpayer. One example is the Feeny Park in Murphy's. This was created by volunteers, but in their tremendous amount of effort, work, and with the creation of that park was almost a creation of a family. Those people that put so much into it were really watching it. And in the case of that park, a good deal of those people are parents and contractors, and sometimes the contractors could advertise their businesses on events at the park. But, and also, I think something similar occurred in Mountain Ranch, where local people got together to create something good for the community. Maybe we need to look more closely at how these things happen, and maybe private groups like Kiwanis, or other groups like Rotary, and maybe even Chamber Commerce, and other community-oriented groups can create some solutions where it's difficult for you to do that from here, because the parks are really local to the area where they're at, and that the people that live there are the most interested in those parks. And this could be a case where you're doing the right thing by just stepping back and letting the people take care of their own parks. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comments, bring it back to the Board. Do I have any other conversation, deliberation, motion?
If, Mr. Chair, if I could do a quick poll on the motion, I'd like to see, I'd like to poll the Board and see whether we'd be willing to direct administration to monitor this closely and assign a staff member to keep an eye on it and be responsible for tracking this, and let us know when it's right for us to do something here. Inside.
For a poll. Supervisor Clapp?
So my understanding, we're pulling the Board to keep Parks and Rec?
No, sir. I'm pulling to see, asking to direct staff to assign someone to monitor this and let us know when it's time for us to move forward and how. Keep track of the rulemaking process so we can be ready, just so there's somebody in charge.
Oh, on Parks and Recs.
On Parks and Recs only. I don't make a motion after that.
Yeah, I'm for that.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Olivera?
Yes.
And I'm for it, so we have five.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, we want to make a motion to approve or withdraw the Parks and Recreation recommendation, let approve the item, and it's a remainder.
With the pulling of Parks and Recs out of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Pat.
I have a motion by Supervisor Garimendi, a second by Supervisor Clapp. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Passes 5-0.
Chair, if you would, looking for someone to keep on that, because Kevin's on that board right now, he's the last survivor, so I could work with him and keep the Board informed what's going on.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, Supervisor Announcements, AB 1234.
Supervisor Announcements, compliance with AB 1234, Chapter to Government Code, Section 53232.3D. Board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense, reimbursement, mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also, at the Board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
We'll start with Supervisor Olivera, who went to Tennessee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, I did attend the National Convention for NACO, which Calaveras County is a member of. The benefits of belonging to NACO affords the county discounts and insurance programs and some other things.
Supervisor Olivera, I mean, I'm interrupting you. Can you, the acronym, NACO, can you explain it?
The National Association of Counties.
Thank you.
Okay. This was held in Davison County, Nashville, Tennessee. California is known in NACO as what's called 100% state. That means every 58 counties, I mean, all 58 counties are a member of NACO, and they participate. NACO is run on a national level. There was 3,069 counties represented in NACO at this convention. And I'm not saying all 3,069 representatives were there, but there was more as far as people attending. The opportunity to view new concepts in county government by various vendors, the exhibit hall there, which I have a listing of all the vendors there, was, ran anywhere from office supplies, to new police cars, to new computer systems, to new systems for tax collection, new systems for public communication. It's a very, very large, big event. It drew a national representation from legislators who spoke and presented workshops. I'll give you a list of the workshops I attended. There was none able, I was not able to attend all workshops because there was only one of me. There are very... There are very, very in-depth subjects, some pertain to us, some pertain don't. But I want to make one statement before I go into what we attended. Our rural counties are rural mountain counties, are very well represented, not only in NACO, but in CSAC, which I belong to. We have a, an alliance, if you will, with Toolumi County, Mariposa County, Amador County, San Joaquin County, Alpine County, Siskiyou County, Modoc County. We see the representatives at these different functions, and we are seen as one. And when we are in that position, in that observation, we are one voice, and that voice is for rural mountain communities. We get recognition nationwide, and I'm very proud to represent Calaveras County there. I wish we had the opportunity to belong to more organizations, but this is one of the ones that really benefit Calaveras County. I was able to attend the following workshops or conference, conference situations. I did fly out on Thursday out of San Francisco, because we couldn't get a, a direct flight there unless it was San Francisco, and that would have been 14-hour travel time. Not a lot of connecting flights. We started on Friday. I started at 9:30 in the morning, attended the Finance Pensions and Intergovernmental Affairs Policy Steering Committee and the Subcommittee Meetings. Now, what we did, we attended these Subcommittee Meetings and followed up with the Committee Meetings the following day. So we were able to have our input heard on that Committee Level, sub-level, then at the General Business Meeting, which everybody attended. We did have a roundtable lunching, improving the health outcomes by integrating housing and healthcare sponsored by United Healthcare. Those were one of the sponsors of the NACO program, the convention. And once again, that gave us an opportunity to listen to what they're doing, not only in California, but throughout the whole nation. And believe me, folks, that varies as far as your community, it varies as far as your state, and it varies as far as your nations compared to Canada and other, and other nations that provide that. I attended the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Policy Steering Committee, the business meeting there, once again, finding out what goes on the rest of the nation and how it applies to us. And I attended these in a block, like I said before, with Supervisor Hamveld, Supervisor Forster from Amador County, Supervisor Hamveld was from Toolumi County. Supervisor Hamveld actually sits and chairs one of the steering committees for NACO. We had the exhibit hall reception at 4 o'clock that day, and what that was, was an opportunity to see all the vendors and the offers that they, and the offering services and products that they bring forth to county government. We attended, this is on Friday, we attended a county talk, and these were like 15 to 30-minute presentations on short subjects. This was public surplus, online auctions for our surplus property made easy. I'm, I'm happy to see that we actually discuss as an agenda item here at Calaveras County. Most counties are going to online auctions for their surplus equipment, and it's a cost-saving situation, and it's a way to recoup some expenses. And it's sophisticated to the point where I'm pretty confident that that will be a cost-saving opportunity for us. We attended the opening reception. The, the activities of this, this conference was 7 o'clock in the morning to 10 o'clock at night at times. So you're very involved and very busy. On the next day, I, I attended the Rural Action Caucus. Once again, we talked about our mountain rural communities, where they have a Rural Action Caucus meeting where we talk to all the rural counties in the nation. And once again, none of our problems are that different from what our other rural counties are facing. Maybe the price tag's a little bit different, but basically, we're seeing the same type of situations and problems. And with that comes suggestions and solutions. So that's, that's what I'm bringing back to our county. I could go on, but that's what our, our time back there. Most importantly, we attended the business meeting for NACO, and that was held on Monday. The business meeting on NACO was like a Democratic or Republican, if you will, national convention that's geared right after it. You sit as a group, and where your state sits as a group, they have the signs that say California, Hawaii, Utah, Texas, and the voting is done by population, by your state member, membership. California has 342 NACO vote, NACO votes for delegates. We lead the nation in vote, in what they call block voting. Now, when they elect their officers, it's have a lot of influence on our legislators back in Washington DC, and our state legislators. It's like a presidential campaign. California has what's called the more, the most block voting power. We lead the nation. And I'm proud to say that we are part of that California delegation, and we're Calaveras County, and our representation there was heard, and I was, I was very fortunate to have the opportunity to go back there. Does it do us any good? Yes, it does. Yes, it does. We have the ear, we have the voice, and hopefully, they hear our voice. We'll find out when it comes back to state level. I actually returned back on Wednesday, so I missed our meeting on Tuesday. I was on, sorry about that. But I did watch it on, on the internet, all 43 minutes of it. Good job, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Clapp, your light is on.
I attended the Motherlode Job Training, because I'm the alternate for Mike, and he was out of the state at that time. And it's a nice committee, Mike, and you're lucky to be on it. And I attended the Economic Development at Ironstone by the Chamber and stuff, and that was quite interesting.
Supervisor Garamendi?
I've got the report.
Okay. Supervisor Mills?
Let's see, I attended Laughco, because you were out of town. No, it's actually, it was a good meeting. July 11th, Wednesday, attended Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Basin Authority meeting in Stockton. The timeline goals that are being, they're being met to complete that plan by January 2020. The Eastern GSA, which Calaveras is a part of, we have some very different challenges to the agencies in the valley, but, because much of our data work's been done. I know Brian Woss did a lot of that back in 2004, and that is being used as some of the baseline for what the GSA is trying to put together in the rest of the basin. The hydrologic conceptual model and water accounting framework have been now identified for the basin, and it does show where the pockets are that are going to need some work. The GSA will be losing their facilitator of 17 years, Carolyn Lott, who also facilitates for the Toolumi IRWM. So I don't know what her status is going to be there, but she has been an integral part of bringing this all together. That evening, we attended the first meeting on the site of where the buses are here in in Cal, in San Andreas, the new transit JPA, to review how the transition has gone and the next steps. July 18th, Wednesday, met with the Assistant Deputy Secretary of Water and Science for the U.S. Department of Interior for review of the North Fork Project, and thank you Supervisor Garamendi for being there as well, and also the Stanislaw River System in general. July 19th, Thursday, Murphy's Sanitary District welcomed newly-appointed Director Ashley Moore. Murphy's Sanitary is beginning their sewer upgrade project this summer along Highway 4 from School Street to the stoplights. So if you're going through Murphy's, you are going to end up in some type of a traffic control there, pretty much until school gets fully underway here in about a month. Also, their Laughco Municipal Service Review is underway. Attended the joint meeting of Chamber of Commerce and the Coppery Business Association mixtures at Saddle Creek in Copperopolis. Mike Lemke and his brother will be doing a groundbreaking ceremony for La Cobra Meaning Unit 2 in early August, as 40 more homes being built in Copperopolis. July 20th, Friday, met with Congressman Luntak, Congressman Maddenum, Interior Secretary Zinke at New Maloney's to discuss the federal role in supplying water from New Maloney's to the State Water Board Water Fix, and also attending where Supervisor Hamfelt and Brennan from Toolumi County, who echoed the same concerns. This last Monday, met with Ron Berry, the General Manager of Tri-Dam JP, on matters surrounding Lake Tullock, some of the longstanding challenges to its operation. The boulders will be placed on the Tri-Dam property across the bridge in Toolumi County early next month. Due to, due to eliminating parking, there is a safety issue, and there's been cars broken into, there's been trash left there, there's been medical aid calls, it's just been a continual ongoing problem for, even for Copper Fire. The day-use facility on the lake is, is moving forward with the intent to have it operational this time next year. That will be on O'Birds Ferry Road. And I did invite Ron to participate in a town hall meeting with the residents along the lake, which I think is very much overdue. And so we'll be getting together with him on that. And if you don't have the Good Morning Calaveras on your agenda for next Wednesday, get your, get your tickets soon, because OES Director Michelle Patterson will be doing her presentation for them. So, thank you.
All right. And I attended a Laugho and meeting. Supervisor Mills was there, as before mentioned. Very interesting meeting. That's all I have to report. Did not cost, act there's any money on any of the other meetings I attended. CAO Lutz. County Council Megan. Board Clerk. All right, that's it. We stand adjourned.
Thank you, folks.